To order at five fifty. And good evening. And the first item on the agenda is to consider and take appropriate action regarding our proclamation of the town council declaring April twenty fifth, two thousand thirteen, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day and calling citizens of Trophy Club to join others at noon on April twenty fifth to blow bubbles for love. And I'll just read this proclamation real quick, since our mayor pro tem isn't here. Whereas parental alienation deprives children of their right to love and be loved by both parents, and it is considered a form of child abuse. Whereas behaviors such as speaking negatively about a parent to or in front of a child can destroy the bond between a loving parent and child. Whereas with awareness comes education, understanding, and the power to stop the abuse of innocent children caught in the crossfire of people they love. Whereas this year is the Eighth Annual Parental Alienation Awareness Day, and the caring citizens of our community will gather together, joining others around the world for ten minutes at twelve noon on April twenty fifth, two thousand thirteen, to blow bubbles for love. Now therefore, I, Connie White, Mayor of the Town of Trophy Club, Texas, on behalf of the entire town council and all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim April twenty fifth, two thousand thirteen, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day in the Town of Trophy Club, Texas.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the declaration of proclamation declaring April twenty fifth, two thousand thirteen, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you. I'm...
You have supervision.
Now, what are we doing with time?
You have supervision.
And I will mention that there is a large celebration of this event in South Lake on that day, is that not correct?
That's correct.
At South Lake Town Square?
Yes, at the Central Market Shopping Center, across the street from Town Square.
Okay, the Central Market, I'm saying, shopping center, across from Town Square. So, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is our town hall meeting regarding golf cart community. Our intention is to host a town hall to receive citizen input regarding the use of golf carts within the town and a plan to become a golf cart community. Mr. Sly.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm set up. In just a minute, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to Chief Niffen to kinda give you and give everybody an overview of the draft ordinance, and I think we have plenty of copies of that draft ordinance back on the table, if you're interested in reviewing what it is the council's considering. And the purpose of this meeting, town hall meeting, really is to gather input from our community that have an interest or a position on whether or not golf cart, if Trophy Club wants to be a golf cart friendly community. And we've gone, we've had several iterations of the draft ordinance and looked at other communities' ordinances that do allow golf carts on their public streets. Obviously, safety is a very important concern of all of us, but there are significant issues that the council is currently grappling with, and the purpose, again, of this trophy, of this town hall meeting is to hear from citizens and what's important to the citizens related to the, to the golf court, the proposed golf court cart ordinance. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn the mic over to the chief and let him give you a brief overview of what the ordinance is that is currently in front of the council for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Sly. As Mr. Sly said, there are copies of the draft ordinance and also copies of statutes relating to golf cart usage on public roadways on the table over to the side. I would encourage you to pick up a copy of each so you can understand a little better what we're referring to. Currently, golf carts are authorized to be operated on the public streets in Trophy Club with these restrictions. Because we are a master planned community and have a uniform set of restrictive covenants, and the county has approved the plat, they can operate as long as the roadway speed limit is less than thirty-five miles an hour. They operate daytime only, they can operate to and from the golf course only, and they have to be garaged or kept no more than two miles away from the golf course. They're also required to have a slow-moving vehicle emblem affixed to the rear. Statute and the Transportation Code, I almost called it the Uniform Act, Mr. Mayor, that dated me, wouldn't it? The Transportation Code authorizes the use of golf carts in a community after the municipality passes an ordinance. It can be operated anywhere within the corporate boundaries, as long as the posted speed limit is less than thirty-five miles an hour, and they have the following equipment: headlights, taillights, reflectors, a parking brake, and mirrors, and of course, a slow-moving vehicle emblem. These statutes that I've just listed here and talked about are on the table over to the side. Council directed Mr. Sly to come up with an ordinance relating to the operation of golf carts on our roadways in addition to the statutory authorized use that we have now. And Mr. Sly turned to me and asked me to develop that ordinance. I reviewed a number of different ordinances nationwide, there are many, many municipalities that have golf cart ordinances, authorizing them, they have many, many different rules. The ones in Texas seem to apply to us best, and I put together an ordinance that mirrored many of the features in the other Texas ordinances. The most recent one is Cisco, and it's just recently been passed. It's very, very close to ours. Directions from the council indicated that there were a number of people in the community who were interested in saving the environment and not producing the fumes that golf cart motor vehicles would produce, and of course, we support that. There are many people who, because of three dollar and fifty cent a gallon gasoline, would like to save a little bit driving back and forth to Tom Thumb, because every trip you take in your vehicle makes that gallon of milk just a little bit more expensive, and of course, we support that as well. And in reality, who wouldn't wanna drive through Trophy Club on a nice spring day in a golf cart? The way that the parks and streets keeps our medians and the way that residents keep their homes and yards, it's a beautiful place to drive around, and I can certainly, certainly attest to that. I drive around it quite a bit, although not in a golf cart. So, we brought back an original draft, and we've been through about three or four different drafts of the ordinance, and you have the latest revision there before you. It's, the first draft was after I put it together, the management team reviewed it, and we presented this, council went through it, as again, I'd said, we've gone through it three or four different times, and I believe we have a document there that's a pretty good, pretty good document. Our primary concern from the police department, though, is not about the environment or the enjoyment or the economy of driving a golf cart. Our primary concern from the police department is the safety of the motorist. I believe that this latest draft takes into account a number of different factors, the concerns that the council has voiced in regard to the operation of motor vehicles, excuse me, of golf carts on our roadways. This ordinance does require seat belts, this ordinance does require turn signals, these are things that are not found on your standard golf cart. But if you can see from the statute, if we just took the list of equipment that the state requires, that also still requires headlights, taillights, and reflectors and so forth. So we're adding a little bit of extra equipment there. I believe that this extra equipment will make things safer on our roadways. This vehicle equipment is very important. If you turn a, turn one of these golf carts over on the golf course, it'd probably be to your advantage to be able to fall out onto that nice lush grass out there on the golf course, but if you turn one over on one of our concrete streets, I think it's gonna be a little less forgiving. So, seat belts, I think, is important. This ordinance restricts operations to ages sixteen or older. You would be required to have liability insurance, you would not be able to tow anything with it, except in a parade. There are a number of features there that, in the ordinance, that would be parade-friendly. For instance, in normal operations, you could only drive it with the number of seats that you had, number of passengers would meet the number of seats and seat belts that you had. And then, you, anyone who was required to ride in a booster seat or a child's safety seat could not be transported in a golf cart. That would not be the restriction during a parade. You could carry your grandchild in your lap if you were driving in the parade. So, there are some restrictions, like I said, that are relieved because of the parade issue. But it's, it's been an interesting experience researching all this. It led me to the federal guidelines on low-speed vehicles, and the original draft that I produced had low-speed vehicles included in it, which have a significant amount of equipment that's required, that's not required on our, in our ordinance. We did discuss this with our schools, the principal parker at the high school said you would refer that students not drive the golf carts to and from school, park them on the parking lot there. The other principals indicated that they really didn't have a, a, it wasn't really strong support among the other principals for parents dropping off their children in golf carts in the, in the morning queue there, on the afternoon pickup time. So we're left with an ordinance here. It's a draft ordinance, very little in it that can't be changed, those things that are required by the Transportation Code, of course, can't, but anything else, we're pretty flexible on. There would be a permitting process that should be required to go through, and we did a sticker so that people would know that the vehicle had been inspected. And I guess now we can open it up to the floor for questions or comments, Mayor.
Okay. As you'll note, this is a draft ordinance, the chief has explained a great deal of it. What we really wanted to do was to understand the perception of the community as far as the specifics of the ordinance, as well as whether should golf carts be allowed at all. So, that's why we're here, that's why we have this public hearing. Amy, I'm a little confused at your note.
You only have two speakers that looks like they wanna speak. Mr. Fred Allen is here, as requested, but many others have just left their email address in case you need to reach them afterwards.
Okay, but they're not asking to speak?
Two, two are.
Two are?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Then I will call Mr. Fred Allen, please. Okay, wait a second. Our standard-
I would like to request the time that may be necessary for me to finish all these documents.
Yeah, all right. What we normally do, or what we choose to do is if our standard is three minutes, we don't have a lot of people have requested to speak, we have a lot of people here, so I'm sure people would wanna hear that, but what, the way I'd like to handle it is that someone else gives you their time.
I think that's appropriate as well, and they've done that.
They, they-
Do they need to fill out a slip?
Yes.
I give my-
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just, the thing is, want that before we start. In this situation, let's go ahead.
All right.
Not, you can't have that much time, though.
I know, Fred, he can't talk that long. You can't talk that long anyway, so.
These are packets, and I'll go through them with you.
I'm just saying.
I didn't get an early view.
Thank you.
Well, I think it's appropriate that we refer back to an old saying that says figures never lie and all liars figure. So, Mr. Niffen, with all due respect, I'm gonna disagree with you from the outset, but let me establish that, establish that course with this package that I just sent out, and I'll go through them with you to tell you what I have there. First of all, we have a draft ordinance that was put together by some twenty people in the community that have golf carts. We also sourced the information on a state and federal level. That's where it gets a little sticky, because there are laws that apply and don't apply. For example, on the Federal Highway Safety Administration, they exempt golf carts, and it's a class all unto itself. And that's recognized by the state of Texas and the Texas Motor Vehicle Highway Association. So, that's why on my draft, you'll see that I start out with golf carts, not motorized vehicles. There are so many different classes of motorized vehicles that it gets very confusing. Since the Texas Department has recognized those vehicles being golf carts as a special and unto their own class, I use the word golf carts. Actually, we agree on a lot of things, a lot of points that you make from the legal standpoint, from the safety standpoint. Going through this packet, after the ordinance that I drafted, along with the other people who participated in the draft, Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, they have a website and they identify the various classes of what we call slow, slow-moving vehicles, and so what is pertinent here is that the rules governing golf carts, and it says specifically, a vehicle is classified as a golf cart. So it has its own classification, and it says on the state level that all is required to have this classification is no less than three wheels, has a normal maximum speed of between fifteen and twenty-five miles per hour, and is manufactured primarily for operation on golf courses. Then it goes on to say, the state does not recognize, or does not title and so forth. It also goes on to say that in cases where golf carts, golf carts must be insured and have the following minimum equipment: again, headlights, taillights, reflectors, parking brake, mirrors, and a slow-moving vehicle emblem, which is the orange triangle that you're familiar, especially if you go in the Amish country. So, do we have any Amish here?
Can you summarize for us what the difference here is? I mean, or are you planning to do that? I mean, there's a lot of material-
But the difference between the Amish and Mud?
No. They, you've, you've crafted another ordinance. Can you summarize for us, what's the difference?
The one is specific to golf carts, and it's also specific to electric golf carts, okay? And the difference is substantial when you read the exemptions and the total packages from other communities as well.
Fred, you realize that our ordinance is golf carts only, not low-speed vehicles?
That's right.
We are only talking about golf carts.
Not in the ordinance, it appears in the ordinance that it's a motorized vehicle.
No, in the definition. I might save you some time here. We, we classify a motorized cart means electric or gasoline-powered, and I'll tell you why we use gasoline in just a minute, commonly referred to as golf carts, but which must have a minimum of four wheels and have an attainable top speed of less than twenty miles per hour on a paved level surface. Specifically excluded from this definition are motorized conveniences commonly referred to as low-speed vehicles, neighborhood electric vehicles, ATVs, four-wheelers, mules, gators, and go-karts.
Right, I understand what you're saying. When I read the draft, I see motorized cart required equipment.
Yep.
I see every motorized cart required by the permitted under the section must be. I see other references, and throughout the draft, it says motorized cart. He doesn't use the term, he being Mr. Niffen, doesn't use the term. Now, if there's a later draft-
Just, just for the record, just for the record, I'm gonna save you a lot of time here. Everyone on this council, we've, we've had this discussion, we all agree that what we are talking about is a golf cart, a vehicle that is designed to be driven on a golf course to carry golf bags and golfers. That's what we're talking about. We are not trying to put anything other than that on the road in Trophy Club.
Okay.
Now, if we need to clarify that a little bit, we'll be happy to, and the reason that we use gasoline is because there's a high likelihood that some residents within Trophy Club currently own gasoline-powered golf carts. We wanna grandfather that, but our understanding is that once the registration process starts, you cannot add a gasoline cart after that time.
I didn't read that anywhere.
I don't, I don't know.
Well, wait, let's get totally on track, okay?
Mayor, if I could, just a second. I concur with your motorized, this draft, this ordinance started out with other type of vehicles in it, and what's happened is the titles have not been corrected, so I would say that your point's valid.
Thank you.
We're with you on the golf cart, we're all there.
Let me go on and let you know what's in the packet, and then we can, you know, if there's any time left, I can discuss it with y'all. But in addition to the ordinance, I have the information on the Texas definitions and so forth, and then I also included the Consumer Protection and Agency test data, Consumer Products and Safety Commission, on the data with regards to the dangers and the accidents and so forth, and the frequency. And when you get into the specifics on that, you find out that there were about fifteen thousand accidents involving golf carts that required some type of emergency care. This was in two thousand nine. In two thousand nine, also, you had two, twenty-eight point five million golfers, and so the accident ratio to the number participating is six one-hundredths of one percent. Very, if you are one of the fifteen thousand, it's a tragedy, all right? But on a general overall basis, it's insignificant. I included that document, and also, if you look on the second page of that document, you'll see that the ages of those who are injured are under twenty, for the most part, okay? And when you get younger than that, like the, like the chief said, when you put kids in there that are underage and need restraints and so forth in automobiles, they don't belong in a golf cart. And it's bared out here, even in the fifteen thousand, okay? One of the reasons, reading further, is that the federal level has exempted golf carts from any restraints whatsoever, except side rails. And the reason they've done that is because they put the category of golf cart in with motorcycle. And when you're on a motorcycle, you don't wanna be strapped to that bike when it's tumbling over a cliff someplace, but you wanna be thrown out, and your chances are better under those circumstances. And so, that's part of the rationale behind no seat bolts, no restraints, other than the bars on the sides and so forth. Then I also included four communities that have golf cart ordinances already, one of which I think of, has already been mentioned tonight, but I'll name those for you, it is, they are Melissa, Cisco, Galveston, and League City. And I can find no consistent relationship between the draft copy that I read and those ordinances, and you won't find any consistencies with the draft copy that I submitted, and those ordinances accept the continuity of equipment and requirements, okay? The permitting aspect of it, I wanna just explain a little bit. I think permitting is a good thing, and I think the chief and his organization can, you know, adequately handle all of that. But what I object to, or would like, not object to, but I'd like for the council to consider, is that those members who are members of the country club, and they pay a trail fee amounting to about fifteen hundred dollars a year, and those people are paying for their opportunity to exercise their right to run their golf cart. Now, from the city standpoint, you'd say, well, well, that's okay, you know, but we need to get some revenues back, too, and we totally agree. And that's why when you do the math on the fifteen hundred dollars, you'll find out that two percent that comes back to the city of Trophy Club equals thirty dollars, and that's what the permitting charge is that we would like to see, thirty dollars. Obviously, if there's a reason to replace it or do it again because you laundered it or something, the permit itself, then there should be an extra charge. And so, I think the charge that Mr. Niffen put out was ten dollars.
Actually, what I would say, that's two percent every year.
Yeah.
So, it's like, every year, we're basically-
The permitting, I don't know that it's a matter of funding, it's a matter of ensuring the safety and ensuring that things are properly fitted out.
And we're not arguing that at all. We think that there should be permits, and they should be exercised with an inspection and so forth. I'm just addressing-
For free?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that we've already paid our thirty dollars to the city for that permitting expense, or that opportunity.
Through taxes.
Okay? And so, with that, I'll take any questions that you'd like to ask, I, you know. Do you have any questions?
You would, you would purport to have windshields in your draft ordinance?
Yeah, you know, there are many-
Are we talking about just the golf cart windshield?
Yeah.
Golf cart, the plastic plexiglass?
Plexiglass, yeah.
Okay.
That's a safety glass.
So-
It is certainly a safety glass. It was when I popped mine out three times and brushing up and having an altercation with a tree.
Were you seat-belted?
Okay, but the thing is, I mean, this is a lot of material, we're not obviously gonna go through all of this at that, this moment.
I'm disappointed.
Can you tell me what the difference is?
What the difference is?
Between what you're, what are you proposing that is different, that you agree with or don't agree with? I'm not understanding without the opportunity to sit down and go through this.
First of all, it's very specific, I understand, County, thank you, Ms. Mayor, I'm sorry. It's very specific to a golf cart.
Right.
An electric golf cart.
Okay.
It's very specific to the town of Trophy Club. The speed limit that I use in the ordinance is thirty miles an hour. I know of no street in Trophy Club that has a speed limit above thirty miles an hour, so I put thirty-five. I just used his basic, good ordinance, and with good points on safety and passing and lane control and everything else, and moved it to the next generation of golf cart, okay? And made it simple, easily understood, okay?
But, simple and easily understood, is it different in its law? In what it's proposing you can and can't do?
Yes.
I understand the golf cart piece, but in the two ordinances-
It's different in the required equipment, the indicia-
That's what I'm trying to find out, what you're saying.
Right, it's different in the type of equipment that you have. He's got seat belts, we don't, okay? He's got turn signals, we don't.
Those were the only two.
What's that?
Those were the only two.
Yeah, okay.
One of the-
Excuse me, just one second. So that's the only difference?
That's the-
No seat belts, no turn signals, in equipment.
No, I didn't, we can go through the whole thing if you'd like.
No, I'm just trying to understand what it is you're saying. Are you saying-
I'm saying that we're, we've made the requirements on the equipment less.
Okay, so, we don't want turns, you are recommending no seat belts and turn signals. Are you making other recommendations regarding the operation of golf carts here that are different from our ordinance?
Yes.
I think it's important for everyone to understand the addition.
Probably the most, the most distinguished as far as the operation it goes is that we feel that we should be allowed to operate our golf carts at night. Otherwise, why would we require lights and taillights and brake lights and all the things necessary for night operation?
So how, how would you purport, then, to make a turn at night without turn signals?
Same thing, same way you did before turn signals were on automobiles. Now, I remember that, I don't know if you do.
I don't.
All right? I didn't know John Kennedy, but I remember that, okay? And you put a hand-up signal for a right turn-
At night?
And a straight-out for a left.
At night?
Yes.
We used to do it.
Yes, you do, that's why your headlights are there. Chief?
Well, actually, your, your turn signal needs to be visible. Your turn signal has to be visible from a distance, and a hand signal outside at after dark, probably not gonna be visible by the required distance. The primary differences that I can see in the two ordinances, just going through briefly your, your submission here, is that it eliminates gasoline-powered golf carts.
Yes, it does.
It changes the definition of motorized cart to golf cart, which falls more in line with what the, the Transportation Code gives as a, as a definition. It also allows three-wheel carts instead of requiring them to have four wheels. It also allows three-wheel carts instead of requiring them to have four wheels. It eliminates seat belts and turn signals.
Seat belts and turn signals, yes.
That's what, just from glancing over without going in-depth into it, that looks like what the primary differences are. Is that reasonable?
Day-night operation and your permitting issue, okay?
Okay, I didn't read through the permitting section on that.
Well, we want $30 instead of $50.
Ah, okay.
But then also that the exception should be for club members because there's a kick, there's a tax back to the city of 2% on the eight and a quarter, and that amounts to about $30.
Mayor? I have a question. In our last discussion, we talked about that we were going to operate 24/7. Am I wrong? I think, Fred, I think we're pretty much, the thing is, we've been through several of these. I think we all remember what we, where we ended up last time was golf carts, not motorized vehicles, golf carts. 24/7. We're still discussing seat belts. I liked, I personally liked the Cisco ordinance where seat belts were required if you had someone that are six years old. But other than that, no seat belts were required and I like that part of it. But I'm kind of for the turn signals. If we want to have a 24/7 operation, I'm probably, I probably could live without seat belts. But if we're going to do 24/7, I'm probably going to want turn signals.
Let me respond to the seat belt situation, especially with young children, okay? If you put a child in a seatbelt or a restraint seating situation, all right? And that golf cart goes in the water, it's going to sink. Now, who's going to get the kid out? That's very, that's one example. And as you read the safety...
The same thing is for a cart, though.
But Fred, that's kind of like you're one in 15,000. I mean, we don't have that much water around here to worry, sir.
So the point, the point I'm getting at is, all I did was follow the federal and state regs. And the federal regs exempt golf carts from seat belts.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
I have a question. On item number 10, I don't know exactly what page it said. If a golf cart is permitted as such and later retrofitted with equipment that permits the top speed to exceed 25 miles per hour, I thought that we did have a limit on the speed of golf carts.
We did, we had the speed limit of the town. Now, that was our last discussion was...
So the speed limit of the town?
The speed limit of the town, yes.
Well, I think the point there is that the chief is making, and we didn't have any opposition to, was the fact that if somebody drops in his, you know, 15 cubic or engine and he's set up to go 300 miles an hour, I mean, you know, that needs to be taken care of. I mean, it's just that simple. There's always somebody, you know, looking for the faster, bigger, the better. And, you know, we respect that. I mean, there's nothing there. It's just, we're trying to make the ordinance consistent. And we did it with 30 miles an hour because we don't know of a street. Is there one?
We agree with that, by the way.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Well, then it looks like we agree. Can we take a vote now?
No.
No, I have to find this.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from other people, actually. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Melissa Pratt?
Good.
We have two kids. We're all about restraints, but we're definitely family youths. I'm nervous, I can't talk to a friend really well. But that's the point. We're all about like the restraint and the family, so.
And what does that mean?
Seat belts are good with kids.
On golf carts?
Yes.
So you, I'm just trying to get position. You think we should have golf carts, but you think they should have seat belts for children?
For kids, definitely.
So let me clarify, let me clarify what you're saying. If I have a golf cart and I have no children, may I clarify? If I have a golf cart and I have no children, I do not need seat belts.
I don't think so. I think with kids you should, if not...
So the question is, the golf cart doesn't have to have a seatbelt, but if there's a child in the golf cart, it should have, they should be in a seatbelt? Okay. Do you have an age?
Go back to the chart over here.
I like the six and under needs a seatbelt. I mean, even a little higher.
Now, what that's going to suggest, I will just say right up front, is we have a lot of grandparents out here. And we have grandparents with grandchildren visiting. And they do not have seat belts.
Well, I think if...
You know what I mean? And the grandkids come to visit.
I think that they'd be willing to put seat belts. Don't you think if you're...
I don't know. If 90% of the time I don't have children in my golf cart, I'm not sure I'm going to...
Jeanette, after we got, excuse me just for a second. When we got, after we got the Cisco ordinance, I did some investigating. They make a seatbelt for golf carts that's removable.
Oh, there you go.
It snaps in when you need it and it comes off when you don't need it.
There you go.
See, I like that.
I like that.
Okay. Do we have...
I'm so thankful for your research.
I'm glad you spoke up about the six and under too, because I kind of thought it was like not an option. And that's our priority is I have to get my kids out of the house and they totally have a better attitude, you know?
So, and that's one of the questions I have. Because right now, and part of the ruling is it's not even seat belts. The fact is, under six, you couldn't be on this golf cart except in a parade because they are supposed to be in a booster seat and all that. The question is, are you suggesting that children under six, given a seatbelt, should be allowed to ride in the golf cart?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you have a golf cart?
Yes, I definitely have a golf cart.
Okay. I really would, did you have anything else?
No.
Okay.
That's my...
Thank you. I really would like to hear others' feelings on this. I can't have people just shouting out, but please feel free to sign up to speak.
I just, is that okay? My name's Erica Lynch, just spoke to you on Facebook. After I was pulled over and they called backup. And I was going to the park with my family.
We had a golf cart?
On the golf cart to fly kites. And I think it should be up to a parent's discretion as far as the kids, if they're mature enough or able to sit in the car, golf cart with them. I like the portable seatbelt. But then again, I don't want to put restrictions on, like you said, with the grandparents, not having seat belts because, you know, they just don't need it on an everyday basis. I think, again, it should be parent discretion. I happen to have it. But then again, sometimes in the back row, there's two seat belts and we may have three kids and we're just going around the corner. How's that any different, you know, taking the seatbelt and going around two kids instead of typical, you know, one seatbelt per kid? Again, I think it's discretion. I totally am so nervous, I forgot what I was going to say. I'm all for this entire thing. The only thing that I would reword is booster seats. Kids are in booster seats, I believe, up until age nine. So I think we need to reiterate that, maybe infant seats, something that requires in the car more restriction versus a booster seat.
Okay. I think this is, this is going to be probably one of our bigger issues because some people think of golf carts, you know, for people going to the golf carts. Of course, both you and the prior speaker obviously have a very different perspective. And I think we need to hear because at this point in time, we're not allowing children on them. So the fact is, do you feel that it's really safe to drive around? I mean, you don't have the discretion in a car whether to put your child in the car seat. So do you feel that golf carts are safe to do that for children? Is that your...
I absolutely feel it. I feel safe with them. The only thing that I'm unsure about on this is you have your main street where the cars are and then the bicycle lane. Clarification, are we allowed to ride in the bicycle lane, which opens up the road? At one point, I was told yes, so I make sure I stay out of the way. So I think we need a little bit of clarification exactly where we are to ride. So I'm hearing different things. I've been pulled over, I think, five or six times already.
How old are your children? How old are your children?
I'm seven and nine and we've had friends over and their daughter is six. Again, I'm not going to take it out on 114 or, and I can't speed. It caps out at 19.6. We have the lights, the blinkers, everything that makes us noticeable. I do absolutely feel safe in it. However, I, my, I try to stay within the neighborhoods instead of the main road. If I can cut through Village Trail to get to the park, Independence Park, I'll do that instead of being on Trophy Club Drive. But again, that's my discretion. I fully support it, all for it. Kids, it makes the best memories for my children, okay?
Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. You mentioned your kids. Have you had occasion, your beeper's going off?
I didn't know if that was my time up.
No, you're fine.
Oh.
You're fine. Have you had occasion where you've taken your kids and their friends in a golf cart to the park or...
Absolutely, that's when I got pulled over with back.
And how many, how many kids did you have in that cart at that time?
Two in the back, which I have a four-seater. I had two in the back, my mother-in-law and myself in the front.
Okay, what I was, what I was asking is, when you take your kids, do they bring their friends along? Have you had occasions where you've had more than your kids and... How many kids have you had at one, any given time?
Um, I've had myself, a kid up front and two in the back, probably three, depending on their size and mate. I think three.
She hasn't violated seats, is what she's telling me.
And the point I'm making is, you know, once you allow the children in the golf carts, we've all seen in schools where they've...
Hey, we stuffed a Volkswagen.
You can, you can put five kids on, in a desk at school, that kind of thing, you know, they're much smaller.
Okay, but if I'm hearing you correctly, if we adopted like the Cisco plan, your children wouldn't have to be in seat belts. Seven and nine, that's over six, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Correct.
So seat belts wouldn't apply to you at all?
No, but I choose to have them in it. I think discretion, parent choice.
You can always do more.
Right, exactly. And I didn't know they had the portable, which is wonderful. But that's it, I think. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
I guess I have a question. How many golf carts you have running around over in your neighborhood?
I have only seen one, so I thought I was the cause of this. Because I've been pulled over so many times. I thought I was the main reason. Yes.
Anyone else?
Two more. Scott, Kenny?
Mine's pretty easy. Just, I'm really surprised at the under six not allowing to have a child. Think of it this way, we're a golf course community. A lot of us are trying to get our kids at the age of kindergarten up playing golf. If I live over by 114 but within Trophy Club and I want to drive to the golf course in my golf cart, I want to be able to take my kids with me. So I'm looking at you as saying, I can't. My wife has to take the kid. I take my car, we meet up there. Is that what it...
I think what we're proposing is you're allowed to, as long as the child's restrained.
Okay, and, and, okay, so that makes sense. But I do, I haven't seen, I've looked out there, I haven't seen the one that's portable, but that sounds good. The only thing I do tell you is, I'm not, I'm kind of on the fence of the whole restraining. Only because, I mean, it sounds good in essence, but Fred does make a good point. I mean, when I was in Kansas, I actually saw a cart go over in the water. Person was trapped under it. So if they were restrained, it was a kid, the adult flew out, the kid went in, they knocked themselves out, you do have an issue. It doesn't sound right, but it is safer to not be restrained in something such as a motorcycle or a golf cart. But I do think if you as a parent should have the right, if you want your kid to be restrained, if you feel it's unsafe for them to be restrained, that you shouldn't have to be forced to put restraints on your golf cart under that speed limit. But if, by all means, restrain all you want, put duct tape all over them, whatever you want to do. But, but I don't think...
Chief Niffen will arrest you for that.
Is that against the law? But I don't, I don't know that it should be required that you have restraints, but I think that's all I have.
I think one thing that's important to understand in this whole picture is we're not talking about the golf carts driving on the golf course.
I know, I'm talking about getting to the golf course.
I know, but we're talking about them driving on the streets where there are cars.
Okay, so if a car bumps me, I don't, honestly, you don't want to be restrained. I know you don't, you've probably never seen it, but if you, you don't want to be restrained. If you've ever, you want to be able to get out of that cart. If a car accidentally doesn't see you, sideswipes you and knocks you into something, you want to be able to get free from that cart and not be stuck in there. I know what you're saying, though. I mean, you're seeing the possibility of getting hit and you don't want to go flying into another car. But you also, I mean, there's pros and cons of both sides. So that's why I'm saying as a responsible parent, if you feel as though you need to have them restrained, I guess restrain them. I don't know that I would feel upfront that I would want my kids restrained in there, especially in a slow-moving vehicle that I stay to the side and watch for other cars, I'm not sure.
I will support you with that because I was visiting with a person who owns a golf cart company. And they do not put seat belts in their golf carts for that reason, what you're saying.
I've seen, and I say, I saw the one with my eyes personally into the water, but that same year, it happened two other times. Granted, it was a college town and who knows what else, but you still, you have that possibility. So just put it out there for your thought.
Okay, thanks.
Questions real quick?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a golf cart now?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a six-year-old son?
Nope.
Don't have a six-year-old grandson?
Nope.
Nobody?
Do I look like I have a grandson? No. My youngest is 10 years old.
Okay. Have you taken him to the golf cart yet?
Yes.
Okay, so when you go, or this is where I was driving at, how do you normally go to the golf cart and roughly where are you in town?
Well, I live on the golf course, but it interferes with too much of the golfers to go onto the golf course and through. So I have to take, I take Trophy Club Drive up to the course, up to the club.
Okay.
And, you know, I do, we possibly, we're newly wed, I mean, my kids are from, so I do plan to have, we might have another kid. I don't know if we plan it, but we might. And if we do, I, you know, because this comes into reality, I'm, we, I don't, I don't think we would want to put restraints on there, so.
This is being recorded.
That's what I'm here for.
Well, the only reason I was asking is that a lot of folks that have golf carts now that are playing golf,
Right.
Looks like we have kind of two different things. Those that are playing golf and own golf carts, I mean, the country club is going to currently restricts and says, this is the type of golf cart you're going to have, period, if you're going to drive and have trail privileges. So a lot of the people that are close to the course will cut across the course when they can and stuff like that and to avoid the public streets as much as they can. They really don't want to be out there with traffic. So I was, I was just kind of seeing how you did.
No, I understand. And we do have two golf carts. I mean, we have one for the course and then we have one that we hope that this goes through and we get to just toodle around with our kids and get them outside when the weather's nice.
That's a four-seater that basically has the backseat.
Yes.
I have, I have a question since you're talking children and for previous speakers on children. We're talking about an age limit here. But if we say that a child under a certain age has to be secured in the cart, we're looking at mom with the infant, mom or dad with the infant carrier with a strap-in mount in the cart. They walk in, they go out, lock it in the cart. That child is strapped in just the way they would be strapped in in a car is an age factor.
Yeah, I personally don't think any kids that, you, if you have to be in a car seat to ride in a car, you don't need to be out there in a golf cart. I mean, that's my personal opinion. I mean, if I have an infant that, I'm not going to put a car seat out there and, I mean, that's crazy. First of all, you're going to strap them in and they're going to be strapped.
They're going to be strapped.
Otherwise, they're going to become a projectile if something happens, I mean...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Along those same lines, we've had some discussion and deliberation in the past as we've considered this ordinance. What about children sitting in mom or dad's lap in the front seat?
So I don't think...
Can you address that issue?
Yeah, I can address it. I mean, I probably won't tell you exactly what you want to hear.
I want to hear what you want to say.
With the chief sitting here, I would say you need to all be, but in reality, we know that, we know that people are going to put the child in their seat. I think there should be a, I do think there should be possibly an age limit. Only, I'm, my personal opinion, maybe two years old. Maybe, you know, if you look below two, you definitely have to be in a car seat. I don't, my kid's 10, so I don't remember all those rules. But, you know, above two, I could see where you're two going down the road at 15 miles an hour, staying in the back roads, looking around at the leaves and the trees and just out messing around. You got your two-year-old? Because personally, I, you put a two-year-old next to you, they're going to squirm around and mess around anyway. And that's why you're probably looking at the seat belts, which I would understand that. But then you got a two-year-old, car hits you, you're stuck upside down, that's your other alternative as well. Like I said, you got, you got pros and cons of both. You got to see, you know, which one, either way, if something happens, it's going to be devastating. And y'all don't have an easy decision to make on that, so.
We have accidents and bikes have accidents. Well, we have accidents, and co, bikes have accidents, cars have accidents, motorcycles have accidents, golf carts will have. So, we cannot prevent any of those accidents.
Right.
We can err on the side of caution with our equipment and regulations, however, it's not, we don't prevent them.
I would statistically look at it.
And I like the discretion point. We have parents out here who are very concerned about their families, their children and everything. And I guess I have to say to myself, they're responsible.
Mm-hmm.
And they make responsible decisions when it comes to caring and transporting their children.
Right.
And I, personally, if I had a child, two-year-old, putting, I would not put them in a car seat in my golf cart.
No.
I mean, period.
No, I agree.
And that's discretion.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next speaker I have signed up is Chris Clark. Do, do you want to sign up, everyone?
Hi, I'm Chris Clark from eleven Palmetto Court. Uh, this young lady who spoke a minute ago made a comment which I wanted clarification on. She used the word bike path. To my knowledge, what she may be referring to are the striped elements of the street. Those are not bike paths. So, those are paths to slow down traffic, and they are not to be used for motor vehicle traffic other than utility vehicles like post, postmen and garbage men and those kind of things. So, I just wanted to make that comment because it also falls into the discussion of the golf carts. Can they or cannot use that area? And how are they going to be regulated with vehicles on the regular part of the street versus the marked part of the street? So, I just thought I'd bring that up, that's all I had to say.
That's a good point, Chris. I believe that the way we have it here, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they can, i, if moving over for another vehicle, for a car, say there are cars behind them, if they're going to move over for the cars to pass, they can be in the calming lane. But they would not normally be driving in the calming lane. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's what the intention is?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do we have a?
Austin Fox?
Austin Fox, thank you.
I have a twenty-month-old, almost two-years-old, and whenever we go in the golf cart, I put him, you know, around, my arms around him, and I hold on to his stomach, and that's how we go around. We'd go around to the park, we'll go to the splash park. But just going to and from the golf course, I think you should be able to go other places. And with a seatbelt, you know, I feel more comfortable holding on to him. It's either me holding on or me and my wife sit there and have him in between us, so. Uh, you know, I don't necessarily agree with not allowing kids under six to not be on the cart, so.
I don't know why that's.
Do, do you have an age limit in mind? Would you, would you put an age, if you were writing this, would you put an age limit in it for children or not? Let me ask you that.
I think it's parents' discretion, really. I mean, you know, if your kid's too squirmy to, to be in a golf cart, you know, if, you know.
Okay.
Yep.
It's my opinion.
Um, John Barber?
Hello, Council. Uh, I have a five-year-old, a three-year-old, and a one-year-old. Um, I, my five and three-year-old, we, we go to church, we ride the golf cart in, and they love it. Uh, I hold on to them, make sure that, that they're in there tight. Um, you know, I've been thinking about getting a golf cart. My neighbors have, have golf carts. I've got, you know, I know several people have golf carts that would like them. I think if, if you, if you're safe with them, you know, the seatbelt thing is, is optional. I, I looked up on Amazon, it's twenty-five bucks. That sounds like a good deal if you feel like you need to strap them in. My one-year-old, you know, she's still tiny, she's in a little car seat, that wouldn't be a good idea. Uh, but sometime, you know, by the time you're two-ish, I, you know, depends on how big they are and how, you know, strong they are. I think you could probably, you know, if they're sitting upright, you can put your arm around them like Austin was talking about. That's probably safe if you're going to the park or the splash pad or wherever you may be, uh, maybe traveling around, uh, Trophy Club. You know, it's, it seems like it'd be a nice thing they'll do is to drive on the golf cart, you know, with them. So, my only concern is, you know, I've got five in my family, and so I have to look at, you know, squeezing five into four, four-cart, uh, four-cart, you know, if you've got two in the front, two in the back, going to six, uh, it's just a little more expensive too, so. You know, something else, uh, I, I fell in the golf cart when I was a little kid. Um, but, you know, that's when, you know, I don't think my dad was being too, uh, too careful driving on the golf cart. So, I, I know what it feels like to get knocked out, it's not a lot of fun. But if you, if you're smart about it and you drive safe, and actually, the streets are, you know, lot, lot less bumpy than a golf course, which is where I, uh, fell at when I was a little kid. I think that, you know, if you're being smart about it, you'll be okay, so, yes.
So, let me ask you the same question. If you were writing the ordinance, would you have an age limit for children on the cart?
That's a tough one, isn't it? Yeah, cause I've, I've got that, you know, when, by the time my, my sons were two, uh, they definitely felt good. So, somewhere between one and two, I, you know, my daughter just turned one a week ago. Uh, she's still got a ways to go, so, you know, that, that's a tough one. Um, you know, eighteen months, I'm sure a lot of kids are probably okay, and, you know, pretty strong to be able to sit up. You know, eighteen months to be able to sit in a cart, you know, especially if you're between mom and dad. Um, somewhere around there I think would be okay for, you know, for, for the parents to be able, you know, hold on to them. And then the older kids go in the back, because they can hold on the sides and be, uh, be a little stronger. So, specifically, uh, at least one, but probably somewhere between one and two is, would be about as low as you would want to push that threshold.
I, I just want to ask you, are you a golfer? I mean, or you, what I'm trying to find out is, is do we have people who are driving golf carts, not because they're golfers, but because they like driving the golf carts?
Raise your hand.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm probably a hybrid. I, I play golf a few times. I just moved here two months ago, so I haven't got my membership yet, but I.
I know, I, I'm not even asking that. I'm just trying to understand if there's a demand for people to use golf carts other than, you know, than those just.
My main purpose would be using it for, uh, outside of golf. I mean, I, I think I'd like to use it at the golf course, but my, the main purpose, and I think most of people I've talked with the latest, would be for outside of golf purposes. So, family stuff, you know, going to the baseball fields, you know, going to the splash park, um, you know, in the parks. I mean, that, those are the main things we do as a family, you know, after work on the weekends. So, that's what I'd be using, you know, when I get a golf cart for.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Could I say something? For those of you that raised your hand, that's why we have this, why we're proposing this, is because you currently are in violation of the law. And, uh, we have, really, you owe a debt of gratitude to Jeanette Tiffany for putting this on the agenda some months ago and bringing it to the surface.
Did you sign up to speak? Okay, she hasn't given me, Amy, do you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have others?
Um, I've sent you everybody, Austin Fox, John Barber.
Yeah.
Just went, and then Terry Hanley.
Okay. This man, I, I saw him walk over, just, Mike.
Mike Carlos.
Oh, okay, you didn't put yes or no, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Can we let Mike go first? Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I just, um, my wife and I just moved here.
Can you go by the, um, microphones so that when people hear the recording, they can hear what people have said?
My, uh, wife and I just moved here from Florida, and we lived there for the past thirteen years. And there are probably more golf carts in Florida than there are people. I was just asking her if we had ever seen a golf cart with seat belts, and the answer was no. As far as an age restriction, uh, putting kids in seats or seat belts or whatever, I'm associated with the aviation industry, and you're allowed to keep a child under the age of two on your lap in an airplane.
That's right.
And an airplane's going to go a lot faster than the twenty miles an hour that I believe the, uh, the ordinance is talking about. I would like to agree one hundred percent with Mr. Mayor when he said you can always do more. And somebody once said you can't fix stupid. If somebody wants to put seven people on a golf cart and go roaring around down hills and everything else, that's going to be the chief's job to stop that, and I don't think he can stop it with an ordinance. So, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Terry Hanley?
Um, my name's Terry Hanley. Uh, I actually own Grapevine Golf Carts, and several people in the room have, uh, actually purchased, uh, golf carts from me. And the people purchasing the golf carts, you know, some are using them, I'd say probably, it's almost fifty, fifty perc, fifty, fifty on how many are actually using them set up for golf for the course. The other half are just doing, uh, they want them for their neighborhood for block parties. Uh, take, take the kids, uh, uh, down the block, have, and, and we're doing a lot of communities where a lot of people are, are enjoying the carts other than golf. Um, most of the carts we sell are actually carts with backseats. Um, now, as far as the seat belts, uh, to answer that question, yeah, that's something, I mean, it's, uh, really easy. I mean, seat belts are only like sixty-five dollars. I mean, they're real easy to come off and on, um, you know, for the, you know, the grandkids, uh. So, that, that's something that, you know, depending on, you know, if the kids are in there or not, or that's, you know, what it, what, uh, this, the town wants, uh, seat belts, that's, that shouldn't be a problem. The only thing I saw, uh, reading through this, most, the, the three common manufacturers are Yamaha, Club Car, and Easy Go. A normal golf cart goes twelve to fifteen miles an hour. With the programable speed, the upgraded speed, it's six, they rate it as sixteen and nineteen. Nineteen, um, and, and there's one manufacturer nineteen and a half. So, without, uh, preventing, uh, the citizens from spending a lot of money, I, I see the, the minimum speed should be, I recommend nineteen miles an hour opposed to twenty, twenty miles. And that's how the manufacturers rate it.
The minimum or the maximum?
The min, the minimum would be nineteen instead of twenty. Um.
No, you mean maximum.
You mean the maximum?
No, the minimum speed.
Okay, can you explain that to me, please?
The maximum, the, if you buy a golf cart, the fastest I can speed it up without somebody spending a, a ton of money, like, uh, I mean, we can get a golf cart to go thirty-five miles an hour, that's, but that's not what most people want to do. But the tier speed is nineteen miles an hour from, um, you know, what the manufacturers, the most the manufacturers sell, top speed for a cart from the com, the three common US-made manufacturer, Club Car, Easy Go, and Yamaha is nineteen miles an hour.
What he's saying is, we don't want golf carts running around at twelve miles an hour on the streets.
Yeah, so.
To impede traffic.
Well, in the, in the ordinance here, and it says low-speed vehicle means a motorized vehicle that is four-wheeled and has an amplitude speed of more than twenty miles an hour per hour, and not more than twenty-five miles per hour on, on paved level. So, it should be nineteen and not twenty, without everybody spending, you know, about fifteen hundred dollars to speed, speed the cart up, so.
Got it. That's good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Make sure everybody's saving money and all that, so.
Terry, now, we have some space down at the Tom Thumb Center. And we need a business down there.
We're close.
If we pass this ordinance, you want to come on down?
No, we're located.
And I, I'm here tonight, um, to take in the information, because a lot of people come in, you know, a lot of, uh, there's over seven thousand residents, I believe, uh, for the town, ten thousand now. So, a lot of people aren't here tonight, and they come to me, and so I'm here to soak in the information to help, uh. Yeah, I don't want to sell something that can't be on the streets.
And do you have any idea how many golf carts you've sold to residents of Trophy Club?
Yeah, um, I, I really started selling this last year, once the club, uh, started allowing, uh, carts. I probably sold thirty-five since last March, thirty-five to maybe thirty-eight.
And then there's another.
Yeah, well, they're, I mean, they're walking, and every day, there, it seems like they're walking in the door.
Just on, uh, from your experience in your time in the industry, what percentage would you say of carts do you see where people put seat belts on them?
It's a lower percentage, um, and usually the only.
Just give me a ballpark.
Uh, twenty percent.
Okay.
Um, and the only pe, and the, the ones that are adding seat belts are the, usually the ones with the young kids. It's, it's not, uh, nobody's adding seat belts if they're have, or they're, if they're grown adults. It's, you know, for the young kids.
Just the kids.
So. Any other questions I can help answer or not?
Well, it's, it's interesting when you said half, because really, when the people raised their hand, half of the people were for, uh.
It looked like it was more without the.
So, we've got a fairly good split even in this room.
I didn't actually say there was not more people from the club over here tonight, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, while we have a, a captive audience, if you don't mind, I'd like to, just by a show of hands, one of the issues that the council's grappling with is, uh, as they consider a, a golf cart ordinance for our community as an effective date. And that relates specifically to the construction that we all know and, and love out here on Highway one-fourteen. Uh, and as a result of all the construction, um, those of us living in this community know that Trophy Club Drive at rush hour is packed full of commuters cutting through our community, uh, not trying to get to a home, but using us as a cut-through to get to three-seventy-seven or whatever the case. So, by a show of hands, I, I would like the council to see, those of you who would support a golf court, golf cart ordinance with an effective date, uh, of September of two thousand and thirteen, when that construction is scheduled to be completed, or, and, and I'll ask, I'll rephrase my question. But the, the issue is, you know, we could put this on the next council agenda for consideration and effective immediately. Or do you think it would be smart for our community to wait until we get that traffic offloaded once one-fourteen is completed? So, the question I'm going to ask, if you raise your hands, is those of you who would support a golf cart ordinance effective September or later of two thousand and thirteen?
What are the options, September or?
Yeah, I think you should go with the other one first.
All right, so let me, let me, let me, I may have. Okay, so, the, the construction on one-fourteen is scheduled to complete in tw, in September of two thousand and thirteen. And all of that cut-through traffic will effectively be eliminated coming through town, right? Uh, so, the question becomes, are you comfortable with the council supporting a, a golf cart ordinance prior to that construction being completed? In May, perhaps?
Can I say something real quick?
There you are.
There you go.
We're worried about rush hour, correct?
Well, period.
Period.
Traffic.
The main problem is during Monday through Friday, the main traffic rush hour time. So, you're asking us to wait till December to the weekend?
September.
September.
Septem, September of this year, that.
Up to enjoy the weekends and maybe later evenings or mornings during the summer, or, you know, afternoon or evening. Restricted, you know, it's already become Trophy Club drive.
I think everybody's got a, a pretty good idea. I mean, I, I think I tried to make it clear.
Okay, what I would like to offer quickly is, do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment? What I need for you to do is to come to the microphone. Yeah, well, go ahead and sign up. I need you to, but I need you to make your comments at the microphone, or, or we won't be able to have it on tape.
Okay, I'm Jerry Tiffany. I live at forty-four Cypress Court, and Jeanette cannot be held responsible for anything I might say. First off, how much does it cost to put blinkers on it? I mean, to directional signals?
About two twenty-five.
Uh, I, I agree with Chief Niffen. I think we need to have directional signals that are electronic, because I think that we should also be allowed to drive at night. We've got headlights, taillights, reflectors, everything else. And if I want to go over to the, uh, yogurt place next to Tom Thumb at eight o'clock at night, I want to be able to go, if I want to go in my golf cart and go over, and if there's other people that'll probably congregate, and you visit, and you finally pull out of there around nine-thirty, it's dark. And so, I think in the, in the, uh, effort to be able to drive at night, I think we have to have the directional signals, and I think that's a, a good addition. The seat belts, I think, should be left up probably to the parents that have children. I think it would be a great idea if you, Danny, would, or the council or whoever, would make available the information on these detachable seat belts that perhaps some of the parents might want to use at different times, because it's probably a good idea when kids are little, because they're fidgety. Uh, one other thing, let me think. Oh, Fred's deal about registering the carts. I think what, what he was driving at is, we who already have carts have had our carts inspected by the country club, because we had to meet their guidelines in order to do that. And so, I think he was trying to avoid double taxation, or whatever you want to call it, as far as that's concerned. But for new purchases and new carts, I think it's not a bad idea to go ahead and register them because we would probably, uh, the club would furnish the registration to the police department on all the carts that are already in use. And so I think, I think that's the only kind of question there that, that there is.
Does, does the, does the, uh, country club require turn signals and?
No.
Headlights and taillights and reflectors, side mirrors?
Headlights, side mirrors.
I mean, when they're looking at inspecting your, your golf cart, are they looking for all of those kinds of things? Because that's really the purpose for all of that.
Yeah, I think that, I think they are. I mean, that's what they were looking for on ours. We, we removed the mirror that was in the center because you can't see out the back with golf clubs back there and the, and that golf club cover thing that drops down. So we've got, uh, side mirrors and those were very inexpensive to have and they give you a great view on both sides of your cart so you know what's going on. The other, the only other thing that I would mention, when I'm driving down Trophy Club Drive, bicycles are driving along in those calming lanes. Bicycles are everywhere, but I don't know why it would be a problem to let the carts drive in these calming lanes so they're out of the main flow of traffic, especially on that street. In the neighborhood, it's not that big a deal, but that's our main drag. And so if they can drive in that area, unless there's a car park there where they've got to pay attention and go around it when traffic permits, uh, I don't think that should be a problem because that's a space that's there that is being utilized, uh, rightly or wrongly by the bicycle people that ride bicycles out here. So that, that's, those are my only considerations about all of this that, other than that, I think we're, we're probably on track to do the right thing. And as far as the traffic people cutting through town, what idiot is going to get out on Trophy Club at four-thirty in the afternoon? And get in the way of these people that are trying to go home?
They're looking at it the opposite way. It could discourage people cutting through town.
Well, eventually, maybe it'll end, you know.
Hey, I'm, I'm going to, did you have to say something?
I just wanted to ask one question of the audience regarding seat belts. How many think we should write in something where we should require a seat belt? And how many think we should not have seat belts at all?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, totally discretionary. You can put them if you want to, but we shouldn't require it. How many think we should require it?
Okay, that's, thank you.
I was going to ask the same question. I have one more question.
All right, and if somebody else wants to speak, you can, we have to make it brief. You can come to the microphone, but I'll let the last few people.
He asked for, um, a show of hands about when, um, we want it to do it. The only time I've seen traffic become an issue during Trophy Club is during that rush, rush hour time or when the motor speedway has something going on. I would hate for the entire summer to go by until September that we cannot use these golf carts. We cannot go to the parks. We cannot go to the pools. I'd prefer, if we could do it immediately, once available for the inspections, um, that's just my only say. Before you do a show of hands, I just want to get that out there.
Did you, uh, sir, did, oh, no, I'm sorry. Did you, one, no, did somebody else?
I agree totally.
Okay. Okay, that's it, Bill?
I, I had two query questions for you and, uh, Councilman Mayor took care of the first one. The one I would like to resolve is the one on age on a cart. And I'm looking from the discussion, two years old. So should we have, my question is going to be, if you'd like to come up and speak, my question is going to be, is should we restrict the age on a cart to two years or older?
I like his two and under on the lap, but no one else older than that.
So your point would be then that there would not be an age, age restriction?
And it's okay for two and under to ride in the lap? Yes.
Okay, so let me ask the question. And my question is, I, I'm going to do it at two and we'll have your input. Should, if you're in favor of having an age restriction of two years or older on a cart, would you please raise your hand? Two years or older, so you could not have a, okay. If you're in favor of allowing children under two on a cart, please raise your hand.
In the lap, on the.
Yeah, just on the cart, yeah, in the lap.
I'm getting the idea of parental discretion.
Parental discretion. I'm not saying you gotta do it. Thank you.
Yes. Ma'am, ma'am, okay, I just want to ask you guys a question. One of the reasons that I have proposed golf carts is I just believe that golf carts will increase this. It's a great place to call home. Would you agree?
Yes.
Okay. I got my input.
Can we get it on the next agenda so we can get this done?
Or is it done?
Okay, Connie?
What?
You have one back here, please?
I'm sorry. Yeah, please come to the microphones.
I just want to get to the golf course from my house. And I don't want to have to buy all the other stuff. I just want to be able to, to drive to the golf course. But because Hogan Glen's got another gate, I can't go the back roads. I've got to go out into the bicycle lanes, which is fine. And I'll pull in and I get, but it's probably not a mile, so. All these wouldn't affect, would have a problem with what I want to do with it. And then, you know, again, just for the people just want to get to the golf course. And I know a lot of people aren't here. I don't know why. Like, that's all they want to do. Then we go down the golf course.
So what, are you saying that you don't want all the restrictions that come with being allowed on the streets?
No, I just want to, I just want a golf cart on the golf course.
Probably are going to have a problem having it always. We'll have to see how we can.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you had clubs on and you had a, a map, the, the only place you could go, you know? And so you didn't get a ticket. I just, I don't, I don't mind. We're just going to get a ticket for it and they're going to.
Well, that's us.
Let me ask a quick question then. How often are you going to be possibly driving at night?
Every Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
At night?
At night? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. To the golf course. I'll go, we have a regular game that goes.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, but you're, mainly these restrictions are added deals or for night-night time driving, not daytime driving.
Okay.
So, so if you're leaving before dusk, then you get back and there, there shouldn't be any problem.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just going in the daytime. I'm not.
Right, but there's, it's, the discussion is when people either stay at the course late and have to come back. So there's a need for lighting. Again, that's why the club says this, this, this is the parameters if, if you're going to have the cart there. I believe yours has, has, has lights, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just doesn't have turn signals?
Right.
Or mirrors?
In fifty years, we were able to do this and this.
And, and, and so the really, the question for you is, all you want to do is play golf. You want to get in your golf cart, go to the golf carts. So you don't want, so the question is, can he?
Comply with the state law, not the town.
Comply with the state law to get on his golf course and go home?
I think that if we read the statute on the, uh, the second one we discussed, if we pass an ordinance relating to the operation of golf carts on the public roadways, I think they all have to follow the, the equipment that is required.
Yeah.
That's the clerical.
Is that correct?
That's correct, but we could certainly add in.
Part of our discussion, part of our.
Well, we could certainly add in that if you're driving, mirror the state requirement, that if you're driving, you still get to do that.
Okay.
And I, and I'm not so sure that I wouldn't agree with that because there are no, there are people who simply want to go to the golf course and go home, period. And I know who you are. You're the guy with the dog, aren't you? That's it, your dog go to the golf course.
I'm the guy. But we just.
Your dog goes to the golf course.
I thought this is why we got the golf carts in the first place out. It's just people want to get, have, put their stuff in it and keep it in there and then drive to the golf course and drive back.
And then you see all these people over here who want it.
Yeah, I didn't, I missed that, so, yeah, now.
Okay.
But now that, again, it looks like there's two different.
Two different purposes. Well, we will certainly take all of the input and appreciate it. Anything else anybody needs to say, we will be working on it.
Yeah. And to answer, I think, Jerry's question, we can certainly have it in front of the council, uh, on April twenty-second.
Yay.
Mayor, I know you'll be on vacation, won't be at that meeting.
Thank you guys. Thank you all so much.
Thank everybody for coming out and I apologize publicly that I just got in from town, so that's why I looked.
Okay, we're going to take a break for about five minutes. We have an invocation by Fire Chief Danny Thomas. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back. I'm sorry, it's been a little crazy here. Uh, we called the regular session to order at seven-twenty-two on April eighth. All members of the council are present or were a few minutes ago. Yeah, he's here. Okay, um, we will have an invocation by Fire Chief Danny Thomas and a pledge will be led by Councilman Bill Rose. If you'll please rise.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for your presence in our lives today. Lord, we ask that you put your hand on these proceedings as we come together and do business as a community. Lord, put your hand on all those that are watching over our nation and our communities and bring everybody home safe. We ask everything in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Go Bobcats. Take state Bobcats.
Yeah, yeah, and bring Jonathan home safe. He's coming home this week.
That's right.
Okay. All right, um, first, Amy, do we have anyone signed up for citizen presentations? That's not specifically related to, okay, we'll pass on. Uh, the consent agenda. All matters listed as consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Second?
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, that's approved. We will, um, just to let you know, we're going to make a little bit of an adjustment. We're going to have the audit and financial report and then we're going to move, um, item number ten and right after that, okay? So, uh, item number six, consider and take appropriate action regarding the adoption of the audit and financial report dated March twenty-ninth. Mr. Aguilera?
Mayor, today we have, uh, the auditors that perform the annual audit force, Weaver and Tidwell here. We have representatives, John DeBurro and Sean, our audit partner. And they're here to give a brief presentation of how the audit went. Uh, we're very excited to have a large crowd here to see the audit presentation. This might be a first, so don't get nervous.
That's why they're here.
And I know that's why everyone's here. Sean?
Thanks, Michael. Again, my name's Sean Parker. I'm, uh, the partner on the audit engagement this year. And I have John DeBurro with me. John, uh, is the senior manager who is actually in charge of the audit field work. So, uh, if there's any mistakes, we'll blame those on him. Uh, I just would like to make a few, uh, brief comments, uh, really about the opinions that we are issuing with regard, or have issued with regard to the audit. Uh, some brief financial highlights, uh, for the town, and this is for the year ended September thirty, two thousand and twelve. Uh, we've issued our audit opinion dated March twenty-ninth of two thousand and thirteen in that, uh, we issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. That means that there's no material modifications that are necessary for those statements to be in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Uh, the audit was conducted in accordance with both general accepted auditing standards in the US and general accepted governmental accounting standards. Uh, in conjunction with that, we've also issued a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. Uh, I'll have John go over that report after I'm done with my remarks. Uh, that contains a material weakness and a significant deficiency in internal control, uh, that were included within that report. The comprehensive annual financial report, of which the financial statements are included, is, is in three parts. It has an introductory section, uh, which is unaudited, contains an introductory letter provided by the town. Uh, it contains last year's award from the Government Finance Officers Association, which the town has received in the last few years. Uh, the, the last section of the report is the statistical section and that's got, uh, about ten years' worth of comparative information. So the, the bond rating agency spent a lot of time looking at that. It's, it's really informative, but that information's also unaudited. Uh, there's a lot of information in there that comes directly from the audit of financial statements, but the statistical section's unaudited as well. Uh, the, the report that we're really, or the section of the report that we're really focused on is the financial section. Uh, part of the financial section is management's discussion and analysis. It's really a good place to go to get a, what I call a reader's digest version of what happened during the last year. There's comparative information to the prior year in there and that's really, other than the statistical section, the only place where that information's available. So I always direct readers of the financial statements to go to the MDNA just to get an understanding as to what happened with the town, uh, over the course of the last year. In terms of the financial statements themselves, uh, there are two government-wide financial statements, a statement of net assets and a statement of activities. Uh, they include both the short-term assets and liabilities and the long-term assets and liabilities. So that's where the, the capital assets and the long-term debt of the town are included, are in those statements. So, uh, with regard to that, there was an increase in, in overall net assets of the town of about three million dollars last year. So that's a, a good indicator, uh, that the financial condition of the town did improve during the course of the last year. Uh, fund balance and the general fund is probably the next primary indicator in the financial statements. There was an increase in, in the general fund of seven hundred thousand dollars over the course of the last year. Now, that does not include any long-term assets or liabilities. It's really short-term assets, cash, receivables that are collected within sixty days and, and short-term liabilities as well, uh, of the general fund. Uh, the capital project fund had a decrease in fund balance of about six hundred thousand dollars to one million, from one point six to one million. That's essentially just, uh, spending down, uh, debt proceeds that were recorded in that fund in prior years. That's why there's a decrease in that fund balance. One thing I did want to make mention of, and John will have a little bit more discussion about this in his report, is that there was a, a significant prior period adjustment. It was actually identified by town staff. It was not as part of the audit. Uh, but the amount of that adjustment was nine point four million dollars. That resulted from, uh, developer contributions that were made, uh, in the PID, a Public Improvement District, over the course of several years. Uh, but we deemed it appropriate to make a prior period adjustment to adjust net assets and capital assets by that nine point four million dollar amount. Uh, so that increased beginning net assets from forty-one point six million to fifty-one million as of the beginning of the year. Uh, also wanted to point out that the general fund budget, uh, the actual results of the general fund compared to the budgeted results had a positive variance of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, that means that, that the revenues, the actual revenues of the town exceeded the budgeted revenues by seven hundred and fifty-five thousand and expenditures were almost right online with budget. They were, were over by ten thousand. So that shows that the town did a, a real good job of evaluating its, its receipts and expenditures, revenues and expenditures during the year and that there was a positive trend in terms of what the actual results were, uh, in accordance with the budget. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to John, uh, to go over the, um, report in accordance with government auditing standards. And then if there's any questions or anything, we'd, we'd certainly be glad to address those.
Thanks, Sean. Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thanks for inviting us here to speak before you tonight. Uh, before I go on, I'd like to just, uh, take a moment to thank, uh, Mike Sly, Michael Aguilera, and the rest of the finance staff for all of their hard work and cooperation in making this a very successful audit, as Sean has mentioned. Uh, I'm going to go over the, uh, report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Uh, we did go over this, uh, a couple of weeks ago with the audit committee. Um, but just to let you know, the, uh, report on internal control over financial reporting basically states that management of the town is responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting. But in planning our audit, we considered the town's internal control of financial reporting as a basis for designing our auditing procedures, but not for the purpose of, uh, giving an opinion on the effectiveness of the town's internal control of financial reporting. And as Sean mentioned, uh, the results of our testing identified two, uh, control deficiencies. One is considered a material weakness and the other is a significant deficiency. The one that's a material weakness, as he alluded to, is entitled developer contributions. And here, the capital assets that are conveyed to the town by subdivider agreements with developers of the PID were not recorded in a year of final acceptance by the town. And as a result of September thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, uh, capital asset balances and net asset balances were understated by approximately nine point four million. And this deficiency in internal control resulted really from the lack of formal procedures uh, over capital assets that are conveyed to the town by these subdivider, uh, agreements. Um, and we made a recommendation to the town that. And we made a recommendation to the town that you improve internal controls over the capital assets that are conveyed to the town by subdivider agreements by formalizing the procedures over such agreements. And we noted that, in addition, that any formalized procedures should include and address, among other things, communication between planning and the finance departments, because this will help ensure the proper and timely recording of any future capital assets that are conveyed by these agreements. And we have had conversation with management, as I mentioned, during the audit committee meeting as well as during the audit, and it appears that, you know, this was brought up to us by staff, and they do have an understanding of what needs to be done going forward to make sure that this is, the corrective action is taken. Our other comment is entitled Preparation of Financial Statements, and this is a comment that we've had in the past. And as we've mentioned in the past, this is a comment that is common among organizations the size of Trophy Club. But Statement on Auditing Standards, number 115, which is entitled Communicating Internal Control-Related Matters Identified in an Audit, defines inadequate design of internal control of the preparation of financial statements being audited as a deficiency in the design of internal controls. Basically, the auditors cannot be part of the town's internal control system. And our recommendation here was that the town evaluate the benefits of preparing its own financial statements versus the costs of doing so. In the second part of this report, entitled Compliance and Other Matters, we note that as part of the audit, we performed tests of the town's controls with various provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, agreements, and other matters that could have a direct and material effect on amounts in the financial statements. However, the results of our testing disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be communicated under government auditing standards. That's all of our report. If anyone has any questions on this or on the cap, we'd be happy to answer them.
I would just like to say, Jeanette and I were on the audit committee. We were the audit committee.
Yeah, we were.
Yes, you were. And I think it was very enlightening to see the quality of the way that we do handle the town. And I want to specifically point out, Michael, for increasing the assets of the town by $9 million. He had suggested, this was not the first time he had brought this to light, but he had brought this to his predecessor in the past, as I recall the conversation, and his predecessor had told him, no, he was wrong. But when he got the big chair, he brought it up, and the auditor said, you're exactly right. So, Michael, on behalf of the town and the $9 million you brought us, thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I move to accept the audit.
Second.
Any discussion?
Oh, I would just like to ask you, John, John. Would you give this a high audit rating in terms, I mean, how would you score it in terms of comparison to others?
On a what kind of scale?
What kind of scale do you want to use? I don't care.
A through F?
Yeah, yeah.
I would say that it was probably in the range of a B+. I think that it went very well, and I have to commend Michael and his staff, especially coming in as a first-year finance director, as Danny had mentioned, that, you know, he had the, you know, the thought process to think that this should be recorded and started questioning it and had the discussions with us early on, and also didn't try to take on too many other projects, concentrated on making sure that he was comfortable with learning responsibilities in the first year going through the audit as the director of finance. So, I think that it went very well. Obviously, there are some things that can be improved on, and I hope to see those going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, guys.
See you next year.
Okay, then we're going to move.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, I think the ladies here are here to talk about the playground. Is that right?
Yeah, that's 10.
That's, okay. That's incorrect.
Okay, item 10, consider and take appropriate action regarding the expenditure of 2008 Park Fund funds towards the installation of a playground located at the termination of Trophy Club Drive in an amount not to exceed $151,268.80, authorizing the town manager to execute any necessary documents. Adam?
Madam Mayor, this is a collaboration between the town and the developer. The developer was going to build a playground adjacent to Neighborhood 6, and we'd received requests from some of the mothers, the mothers group that meets at Harmony Park. When the playground was removed, because it was obsolete, there was really no other small child, small younger children user playground, so we felt it would be a good opportunity to team up with the developer. We've, we have a, the playground before you and your pack, it proposed to the developers providing approximately $41,000 of labor and materials, and the town, you see the town's amount right there. It will be an enclosed playground. The proposed one would be an enclosed playground, which we think is appropriate, given the location of it. We think it's a very good look, very good, where it sits in the community is a really, a good spot. It addresses. It wasn't our just super ideal, greatest spot on the earth, I'll just be honest with you, but it's a very good spot. It's not in the middle of a park. It is a playground. It's sort of a little oasis is what it is. And we had a special events, special events, I have so many committees, facilities, subcommittee, meet and select the particulars on that playground. It's a Trontosaurus Rex playground. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning it.
We did have some speakers. Let me. Jamie Powell?
Hello, Madam Mayor. Good evening, as well as Reston Councilman. My name is Jamie Powell, and I'm the president of Trophy Club Families. Our group represents 165 families comprised exclusively of Trophy Club residents, and we have many of those here this evening. Obviously, you also have other letters that were of the mothers who could not attend or the families who could not attend. Some of these moms have sitters at their homes, so we appreciate you moving up on the list. Counts for less dollars. The ages of our children mainly range from newborn to five years old in the immediate group of Trophy Club families. We also have a subgroup of moms of school-aged kids that usually range about kindergarten, basically elementary. My main goal of president of Trophy Club Families is to pretty much assign playgroups. They meet once a week. I'm in constant contact with those moms, the playgroup leaders, excuse me, and their whereabouts of where they decide to go for their playgroups. The objective and the main goal was to keep it in Trophy Club. Obviously, we're only Trophy Club families. Well, I've noticed a trend. We wanted to keep it in the Trophy Club parks, restaurants, people's homes, that kind of thing. We grew large, some too large for actual playgroups in the homes. So, what I've noticed is, because of the lack of parks, most members tend to go to other parks in Trophy, Southlake, Grapevine, Colleyville, Keller, for more taller friendly, or basically just enclosed parks. There is no doubt that the trend of families moving into Trophy Club is with younger families. When I first took over in February of 2012, we had a whopping 75 families as members. Now, we have 165. The range these days is we get about a new member a day, thanks to one of your big publications, where Trophy Club Families is the first club. Also, because our Facebook page is inundated with questions on where's the best parks, where are your doctors, preschools, et cetera. I mean, I think they pay their water bill, and then they come to us on Trophy Club Families. It's how, pretty much how it works. Rachel Cook, Haley, Rachel Cook, who is here, will speak in a minute. Haley Lillen asked us to be on the subcommittee to help out with Adam and the rest of the Parks Board in forming a playground. We researched this. We scoured the pamphlets, the books, there is catalogs. We asked our members, what do you want? We took this decision to heart. We really wanted to give our members what they were wanting, most of all, which was a playground for all to play in, an additional playground in Trophy Club, not just Harmony Park, an additional one, as well as to be shaded and fenced in. Got to keep the little guys contained. So, we, like I said, we listened to our members, and we feel that we have provided to you a sustainable, fantastic, and innovative play structure that will be utilized for years to come. And like I've said more than one time already, we only have one park in Trophy Club. It's growing. We can use another park. It gets crowded. We had our Easter party there. There was about 100 families there, and there were not enough swings or anything for people to play on. So, I was excited when the Parks Board approved it, and I would hope that you would follow along in the same footsteps and approve it as well, so that we can have another park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have questions? I don't know. Supposed to ask that? Yes, sir.
I do have, I do have a question. I attended the Parks meeting.
Okay.
Watched the presentation there, picked up good information, and as I, light bulb came on. In this diagram.
Yes, sir.
Where are the parents going to sit?
Well, that's a good question, and you weren't the first person to ask that. There is, I believe, Adam, correct. It has been worked into the budget where there will be benches as well as their tables. Maybe yes or no?
Yeah, we put monies in there for contingencies, too. We realize we'll have to both put in benches and tables.
Okay.
Because it doesn't show the sidewalk going around it or anything like that, so.
Yeah.
And I don't know, did it show the swings? No. And there's swings, and they're all on the same side, which was like a big deal, because toddler swings and the original ones were on opposite ends, and I have a four and a two-year-old. That doesn't work. Mommy can't push both, so we asked that they be aligned on the same side. But yeah.
Well, that's good. I think it's really good to have input from people who really.
We use it.
Here, use it. That's excellent.
Every week, more than once. Thank you very much.
Okay. Rachel Koch? Cook? Okay.
Hi, howdy. Thank y'all for letting us speak, and I'm not as eloquent of a speaker as Jamie, but I'll do my best. And pretty much, everything that she said pretty much sums it up, so I'm just going to add in a couple of things. Just to know who I am, I have a two-year-old and a newborn, so a soon-to-be-using the toddler playground, little one. And we live on Parkview, which is right where Beck Elementary is, Medlin, we're right there. And I have been a member of Trophy Club Families for about a year now, and I'm a playgroup leader. Just to reiterate kind of what Jamie was saying, is that we want a destination park, a full nether park. There are plenty of other, other than Harmony, there are plenty of other little structures throughout Trophy Club, but they're not a full-on playground. Indy East is a really good example. Since we live on that street, we do frequent Indy East, but it's nerve-wracking, because it's very close to the street, which is another reason, I'm kind of jumping around on my notes here, but another reason why we want an enclosed playground, which I know that's an added expense, but we feel like it's an important thing to know. If it's going to be toddler-friendly, you want to have your kids, you want to know that they're safe. And this may seem insignificant, but spending money on big things like something like this is the reason I think it's a good thing. The, a perfect, good example to me is the splash pad. The splash pad is phenomenal. People come from all around the Metroplex to go to our splash pad. I've run into friends there that live 45 minutes across town, and I'm like, what on earth are you doing at Trophy Club Splash Pad? I have friends coming in town this summer from Miami, and they, instead of staying with their friends in Frisco, their family in Frisco, they're going to come stay with us because we have this cool splash pad. So, having this cool dinosaur-themed park is another thing like that that's, I told the same friend about it, and she's like, oh, my gosh, that's so cool. My boys would love that. So, anyways. Another thing I want to talk about is just, we did think it out. It's, obviously, it was well thought out as far as doing it right. Part of the big expense is putting a shade structure over it. It's, we kind of, in discussion, decided that if we weren't going to have the shade structure, there's no point in even having the playground. We want to be able to take our kids somewhere where we're not going to have to lather them up in sunscreen. Obviously, we do that for the pool, but not when you go to the playground. Just, so just being able to have that shade, especially when you have little ones, when you have a growing family, like my newborn, she's not going to be able to have sunscreen until she's a certain age. So, being able to take my toddler somewhere where we're not going to have to mess with all that kind of stuff, having that shade structure is important. And obviously, we found out that playground equipment is expensive. That was a learning experience. But the stuff that we looked at, we did look at putting little modulators here and there at Harmony and things like that, but it just. Is that my time?
Go ahead.
Am I done?
Please, no.
Sorry. I didn't know I could talk for three minutes. My friends do, though. But what was I talking about? Oh, the modulators. It basically came down to like a nickel-and-diming kind of a thing. And the, what was I going to say about the Neo system? We just don't have, well, never mind. I'm not going to get into the Neo system. What else is I going to say? Bottom line, we're a growing community. Our, we're getting a lot of young members now to Trophy, young family members, to young families, to Trophy Club, and this would definitely be a great addition to our town. As far as location goes to, it doesn't matter. We would love to stay in Trophy Club when we're doing things, instead of going to North Park in Southlake with an enclosed area. I would, I don't mind driving all the way down to Harmony, so I'm not going to mind driving all the way down to the other end either. So, anyways, go Dino Park.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think it's really, I really appreciate all the effort you all have put into it, because I think that's what makes things really work around here, is the input from citizens and the involvement of people. And just even the little thing that you mentioned about, not little, about understanding the costs, because I can promise you, we look at something, go, what? But when you actually, you know, dig into and really understand what that takes, it just really helps in the communication as well as doing it right.
If I may make a motion, make a motion to approve the expenditure of 2008 Park Fund funds towards the installation of a playground located at the termination of Trophy Club Drive in an amount not to exceed $151,268.80, authorizing the town manager to execute any necessary documents.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I'd like to say one thing, especially to these ladies. I live up in Turnberry, and I'm, I'm so happy that y'all finally have gotten here, because I know Mike is tired of hearing this from me about putting a park up at that end of town. If I go walking up in Turnberry, if y'all know how many young families are up there with children, you get accosted. When are we going to build a park? When are we going to build a park? I want to thank the Park Board, even though no one is here, for really doing an outstanding job and really have exceeded our expectations, at least my expectations, of what we would end up with. We need something up in that part of town. That's where most of the young families are coming now, a lot of children up there. And Adam, I think y'all have done a really good job in putting this park together, and I certainly support approval.
May I say something? And I think it was 2011, I joined the council. And I remember the very first, what was it, motion or vote I took? And it was regarding spending $250,000 on a splash pad at Harmony Park. And I remember saying to myself, in fact, I said it to the council, you know what? This town is growing, and I know there are going to be some other areas in need of park facilities. I'm not a parent. I don't know, and I look at it, you guys, you're so young. With all these children. But anyway, I just want you to know, I saved my vote for tonight to vote for park equipment in an environment and area where it was needed. And so, I'm very thankful that I did not vote to spend $250,000 on a splash pad at Harmony Park. I remember that. Remember that vote?
Mayor, my bad. I'm sitting there looking at it, because we revised the document. In your packet, it's an 8% contingency of $11,525.24, which makes the total cost $155,590.76. It's my bad on the.
Who made the motion?
I need to amend the motion. The amendment would be, say the number one more time. Adam, sorry.
$155,590.
$155.
$590.76.
And 70 cents.
Tell me again.
That's what's in the packet, but sorry about that.
Yeah, it's down, I got total cost. Second. I think I had the second on the original.
That's what's in the packet?
Yeah, it's down in the total cost. It's on page 186.
I guess I'd like to make one other comment about this as we're discussing it, because I know the. because I know the mayor is very adamant about involving the people of Trophy Club in decisions. And this is interesting, because tonight we had the involvement of residents in the golf cart. We've had significant investment in your, from your part in this decision. And it is really, really critical, because that way, I was just going to say, we get to share the excitement, and we get to share some of the responsibilities and the decisions being made, and y'all were invested in it, and now the mothers can come and ask you, well, why didn't we do this? I mean, so we can spread everything. So I applaud the mayor for continuing to encourage various different entities in the town to involve themselves. So I encourage you to keep at it and stay involved.
And as a Park Board liaison, I just wanted to share one story, kind of goes off what Jeanette was just saying. Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, the original thought by the Park Board, and Larry had told me this, was, you know, again, break it up and put smaller pieces here and there and there. And then when you met with the user group, it was like, whoa, we didn't even know this. And so I think it's really important for us to reach out to those user groups and say, what do you want? Let's not assume. Let's go out to those user groups and see what they want.
Well, and, and I, I totally agree with you. The good thing about this, and, and the somewhat change, if you will, is I don't think that this group has been, I don't think most people knew about this group for a very long time. And the fact is, we have a lot of groups that have organized sports, athletics and organized baseball, soccer, and things like that. And this is an opportunity to draw the whole community, to take the other parts of the community that aren't necessarily covered by the things that we do for organized sports. So I think we're making great progress in doing that, in recognizing that there are citizens of all ages that need. And we'll, we'll get there.
It was obviously a very influential group of women here that can make their husbands stay home with the kids.
They're trained.
Yeah.
Having attended the Park meeting, and Haley was speaking about the group and the size and the dynamic of the facilities study that was going on, and the comment was made, well, one-hundred-and-sixty-five families. And I kind of went, what? You know, that were involved in the study. And once again, I really appreciate your total involvement. On the shade structure, I know when I was watching the discussion at the Park Board, and I went, you know, in the back of my mind, I'm going, this is, this is beautiful, but this is Texas. And so this, you know, it needs to be covered. It increases, it's not just sunscreen.
Yeah.
It's, that equipment out in the sun will get hot. It will burn you. So, and then I've talked with Mr. Adams about this. It's not only, we need to make sure that we get a good size canopy over that area, and we need to make sure to the maximum extent we can, that we get full utilization out of the shade by aligning it for the summertime exposure. And I think with the addition, you know, obviously, a fence is required. I mean, that's without doubt. And I think with the addition of benches and maybe some tables, it'll make it a very nice facility. And once again, I thank you all for coming out.
Thanks. Okay.
Mayor, I guess I need a clarifying question. Is, is the quote from what I looked at and the little sketch drawing that I see from Playwell Group, at the current proposal with the one-hundred-and-fifty-five, there is no fence. Is that correct or not?
No, the total cost includes the fence. The, the difference was the, there's a difference in pricing between chain link and wrought iron. And so that's where the, and Park Board agreed to that that night. No, the, the quote for the fence is not in there. The contingency catches that. I didn't have all the information from the developer at the time we basically compiled the packet, so we went to eight percent.
So what is it now? Chain link or?
Wrought iron.
Wrought iron.
We didn't know we had to get that.
Okay.
Okay. And again, I want to thank you guys for coming out in, because it's y'all's, I guess, input and stuff like that of what, you know, as our town grows, as, as we talk in the council, as our, the demographics of our town is changing rapidly, and which is a good thing. So, but, so the needs of the town are going to continue to change in that process. And my only comment on there is just, because I haven't studied the drawings yet, is, and if we do expand how big the, the cover is currently, and is it just going to cover the play equipment? Because it really needs to come out far enough to cover the benches and runs, because it's just like here with some, we've got some young mothers that the toddlers are going to still be in the strollers, and the next notch up are going to be on the playground, and they need to stay cool, too. So I think we, we need to double-check that before we catch, catch the hit purchase.
You want to take that?
It, it, most playground equipment, it covers the structures. Now, it doesn't cover the playground site, which would be a really big shade structure. I haven't, I mean, this one would be comparable to like what's at Harmony, but when you go past that, it's, it'd be a very large structure. It does just cover the primary playground equipment. It doesn't cover, like I said, when we looked at it, one of the things we couldn't do is get a layout until they, they basically prepped the site. We'll try to get some of the site amenities, such as benches, under the structure, but it doesn't go to the confines out near the fence line. It doesn't go near the fence.
It may be in the out-years that we build little pavilions or something over the tables and, and benches and that kind of thing.
Well, where I was heading at is that the bulk of your costs there is your structural frame system. Your fabric's pretty inexpensive, so going out another four or five feet in one direction, you're not, you shouldn't be talking much cost. If, if they're quoting you quite a bit more, then we may need to consider a different supplier.
Gotcha. We'll certainly check into it.
I have resources.
There we go. I have contacts. That's good.
Okay.
You ready? All right. All those in favor? Okay. You got it.
Done.
You're welcome.
Thanks, y'all.
It's okay. You're welcome to stay.
Love to have you.
No, that's it. We've just approved it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to now move back to item seven. Consider and take appropriate action to accept the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Joe Lancore. Mike?
Thank you. Joe?
My name is Joe Lancore. I'm an architect, and I am the culprit resigning. I've been asked to explain to you why there is no ulterior motive. I simply received an, an offer to commission as an architect for a large project, which is out of town from a prior old client. And it got me excited, and I, that's what I have to do. I'm not leaving. I'm at one-oh-five Seminole Drive, and I'm staying there. The problem will be, I'll be out of town so much that trying to match a schedule is, is not going to happen. And there, there's so many public hearings involved in this project that I'll, I had, so I had to give up my spot. I did, however, twist the arm of a very good friend of mine, Richard Sinelli, who's sitting in the back there, also an architect, to make application to, to you guys to see if he couldn't fill in for me.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for what you have done and for being willing to step up, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Mayor, what I would also like to say is, in discussions with Joe, he has certainly offered his assistance and expertise in the future for special projects that, you know, he would be able to participate in, given that, given the kind of time and scope with those kinds of projects. So he wants to stay, engage with the community, and, you know, certainly from the staff's perspective, we'd certainly thank you for what you've done.
Thanks, Mike. And that is true. I would like, I am, this is where I live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to accept the resignation of Planning and Zoning Commissioner Joe Lancore. Thank you, Joe.
I reluctantly second. Is there an effective date on that?
April thirtieth.
Do we need to tag that on?
Effective April thirtieth.
You approve with the second. With the effective date.
Okay. All those in favor? Obviously, I have a lot of options to accept it, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks for your service.
Item number eight. Consider and take appropriate action regarding a resolution number two-thousand-and-thirteen-dash-oh-five amending resolution two-twelve, two-thousand-and-twelve-dash-twenty-six, appointing citizens to serve on town boards, commissions, and corporations in order to fill four vacant seats on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of the respective unexpired terms of those seats, designating a chair and a vice chair, and providing an effective date. Mr. Sly?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinarily, Carolyn would be here to give you every staff report of P and Z. P and Z did meet, and we had six applicants for, at the time, three vacancies. We now have a fourth effect, and that fourth vacancy would become effective with, with your appointment on May first. They interviewed five of the six applicants, the sixth not being there for, to be interviewed, and they provided a, a list that you have in your packet of, the P and Z voted to prioritize their recommendations. The one position, the fourth position being Brent Card actually serves on the temporary CCPD board currently, and I would anticipate if the, if the CCPD board is created in the May election, that he would like to continue to serve on that. So one of the considerations you might consider is appointing the fifth applicant, Larry Vowell. And you don't know what, what to suspect or, or expect from our citizens, but if the CCPD is created in May, we'll have a need to appoint that board permanently. And of course, our handbook doesn't allow to serve on more than one board. So that's, that's your consideration, but the, it would be the staff's recommendation, certainly to adopt the proposal and recommendation from the P and Z, with that one consideration for Larry Vowell in lieu of Brent Card.
Have we discussed this with him?
With Mr. Vowell?
No. Mr. Card?
I've tried to reach out, and I did not get in touch with him. But I, I mean, he, he did serve on the temporary CCPD and, and is still serving on that particular board, and I will certainly reach out to him and have that discussion with him. I know he was actively engaged in that dialogue and process.
I have a question for Patricia. Patricia, before I can make a motion, I have a conflict here. How?
Yes, and you don't? And I apologize, and everything I was doing today, I completely forgot about that. You, you don't, I don't think technically have a conflict. However, I think you and I talked about it with your wife's business relationship with one of the candidates, and felt like it was best to recuse, recuse yourself from the vote on this. So at this point, if you would step out?
Just as an explanation, the very, Garrett and my wife have a business relationship, and so that there's no possibility of anybody saying or accusing me of anything being out of sorts. I will recuse myself, even though I called him and asked him to fill out an application. So that's why I'm leaving the room.
Do I not get to vote on anybody else?
I think he's one of the slate of candidates, so, yes.
I'll leave.
Been nice knowing you.
Bye-bye.
So now I have a question. I know we have a, a. A resolution. There is a way to amend the resolution, that we can appoint one, and then, or, and should we, you know? I guess what I'm getting at is, can the rest of the council consider Garrett Reed, and should we appoint him or not? And if we, and if we do that on that part, then can we bring Councilman Mayor back in for consideration for the rest?
You could, just as, as it's currently presented, it appears to be a slate of candidates, so, or slate of applicants.
I guess I'll turn to my fellow council members and see if they want Mr. Mayor's participation in the rest or not, since it looks like it's, it's possible is what you're telling me to do. Is that a?
If you go ahead and take a vote on the one that he has conflict on, yes, sir, it is possible.
Is that a challenge for you or staff?
Not at all.
Okay.
I think that actually makes some sense.
It's appropriate, yeah.
Because I think that we do, we should all be involved in this, so I agree.
I have, I do have a question on the form, the page one-fifty-nine. There are some dates. Are those dates the ending dates of the current term?
Yes.
In other words, those persons appointed to positions one and two will be up for reconsideration during the next cycle, the cycle that's approaching?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any, me, me, my, me, I move to appoint Garrett Reed to position two.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
That one went quick.
Okay.
All right, Danny, you didn't get out late, baby. Get back in here.
Thank you. Danny, what, we have decided that your input was valuable.
Significant.
We will, we have voted to appoint Garrett Reed for position two, and now we'll do the rest. So, okay?
Thank you.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion? Or just go?
I would make a motion based on staff's recommendation and based on the fact that Brent Card is on the other committee that we moved Larry Vowell up to number four position.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Okay. Let me ask you a question, Patricia. We just put Garrett in two. Do we have to designate the others, or do we do that next?
Because the terms expire at different times, you'll need to designate them now, who your point to expire in Aug, or September, and who will be twenty-fourteen September. You've got September twenty-thirteen coming up, and then September twenty-fourteen coming up, so two different terms. So, yes, ma'am, you need to designate who is going to fill place number one, because that's a twenty, it's a shorter term.
Right. But we also have the chair and vice chair.
Chair, yeah. And you'll designate those as well.
Okay.
I need a piece of, I need a little bit of clarification. Is the chair and vice chair tied to the current term expiration, or is it only tied to the individual?
It was, that person was appointed, and that was their term, so you are not, you are not tied to twenty-thirteen or twenty-fourteen on that. You can move that around.
Okay. Thank you.
So what we need to do then, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to take the other three candidates and decide whether they're two-thousand-and-thirteen or two-thousand-and-fourteen.
Yes, ma'am.
The chair and vice chair, we come back and, and do separately.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
So who is making a motion?
We have a motion on the floor, Mayor.
Okay. For what? I'm sorry.
To move Larry Vowell from position five to position four.
And then I second that.
You did.
And we have not voted on that.
Okay. The question, I understand what you're saying, those three people, do we know in which slot we want to put them?
No. All I am saying is Brent Card is currently serving on a board, and staff is recommending All I am saying is Brent Card is currently serving on a board, and staff is recommending that Larry Vowell move up, so if he comes out...
Right.
Larry Vowell would go in that slot.
It's not, but, okay, they have four ranked there for us, right? But that doesn't say which term they go in.
Mayor, that doesn't matter on this, on this position. The motion is to move Larry Vowell to position four.
Adjusting the ranking.
Then, and then we have a different ranking. Okay, so...
Okay, so, what we're voting on is moving Larry Vowell to position four. Is there any discussion? I will just say that I have...
That's, it's position four in the ranking, it's not position four on where you're writing.
And I personally have a, just some concern with that, that we haven't discussed that with Brent Card. You know, I mean, we're making a judgment for him, and we haven't talked to him. That's, I'm not comfortable with that, but that's...
You can vote no.
That's right. So, all of those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it's passed, so we have... Now we have Richard, Larry, Fred, and...
Garrett's in spot two.
Garrett's already...
Garrett's in two.
Garrett's done. Okay. So, we have three slots. All right, so what we need is a motion for those people to be slotted into the terms. And reminding you that, which is why I got a little confused, that when you made your motion about Garrett, you put him in one of the terms.
I did.
So, that's...
Slotted him in two.
For the others to be in a term.
Yeah, that's what...
No, I didn't just make this up, you know? Okay, here we go. All right. So, we have Richard, we have Garrett in the 2013 term. We need to place Richard, Fred, and Larry in a term.
Are we going to do these individually then, just...
Okay. Or you can propose, you can propose a slate, if you like.
Okay, then, I move that we propose a slate of three commissioners, Richard Suneli, Larry Vowell, and Fred Allen.
Yes, slots for him?
Well, we're not going to put them in, do we need to put them?
No, I meant, you can go ahead, not doing them one at a time, you do them all three, but put them in the, in the terms.
Now, okay, well, easy, we're just going to go right down the list. Richard Suneli, 2013, Larry Vowell, 2014, and Fred Allen, 2014. Effective date of appointment is May the first, 2013. Correct?
Mm-hmm, that works. I'll second.
Any discussion? Is everybody clear on what that is?
So, I understood you had proposed for Richard Suneli, if I think that's pronounced right, for the early term, 2013, and then the other two gentlemen for the 2014.
Correct.
And then, scanning through the minutes here, but Mr. Suneli was the first top choice from the P&amp;Z. I guess my question is, should he be appointed for a longer term or the shorter term?
I would say the longer term.
Well, then we need to...
Would you amend, could you amend your motion?
Mr. Richard Suneli, we will, we will amend this by placing Richard Suneli in 2000, number four slot, 2014, is that, is that the longest one?
Well, you might did the first one.
No, number three.
Number three would be the longest.
Okay, number three, 2014.
Second.
And, and so then that makes, we put Fred Allen in the first slot, 2013.
No, it's Larry.
Larry.
Larry was the one he had in slot three.
Forget it, I don't even know what I'm doing anymore.
Okay, so what we're saying, what I think you're saying is, we will appoint, just put Richard in the...
There you go.
Larry, Larry Vowell and Garrett Reed have the 2013 slots, Richard Suneli and Fred Allen have the 2014 slots.
That's it.
Okay?
And Fred Allen's appointment is effective May 1st.
But that's where I had him originally.
Yeah, I know, he stayed there.
Okay. Did we get a second on that?
I seconded it.
Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure I got it right. Okay, so, I'm just going to use first names for simplicity here. So, we have Fred for 2013, effective May 1, and we have Garrett, effective, I guess, immediately on appointment for 2013, and then we have Larry and Richard, terms expiring 2014.
Correct.
Did I have it correct?
No.
I didn't think that was already there.
No, no.
Larry is 2013. When we need to redo the motion?
Slot, no, no, I wrote it down, and she went long. Number one is Larry, two is Garrett already in, three is Richard, and four is Fred Allen.
Well, now, four...
Four was the one.
Yeah, that's right. Which one is the longest one?
The longest one is three, which is where we put Richard.
It's too, they can always reapply.
Liz Ross.
Yeah. It's not exactly...
I don't, I don't understand.
Okay.
Amy, do you have this?
Did, did you get it?
We were good till you started asking questions.
I'm sorry, I'm just...
So, the idea is Larry and Garrett is 2013, Richard and Fred's 2014.
That's correct.
All right.
Okay.
All those, is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Okay.
Getting harder than that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited. I'm excited about this, I think that, we're moving forward, we had a lot of excellent candidates, so it's, makes it difficult. Okay.
I think we have one other.
I do. We now have to designate a chair and a vice chair.
Which do you want to do first?
You can either do one, the chair, I guess, first, or do them both. We just need a motion to appoint the chair and vice chair. Do we appoint the vice chair?
Yes, yes, you do.
We do, I know it's a chair.
On P&amp;Z is the one.
I know the chair you do, for sure.
Well, I know that.
You do both?
Okay.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay, I will make a motion, Madam Mayor, to appoint to the chair, Richard Suneli, and to the vice chair, Larry Vowell.
Okay, I'll second to get the discussion going.
Okay.
I have a question of procedure for the attorney. Do we have the latitude of going into executive session for interviews?
For interviews of the candidates?
Yes.
We would have to have posted that.
And we didn't.
No, sir, we did not.
Thank you.
I thought we could go into executive session on any item?
On legal advice, under legal advice, not on personnel exception.
Well, for the, for the point of discussion, I've read and reviewed everyone's application and their credentials, and every person that we have selected, and including the people that are currently on the board, any of which would be certainly qualified to hold the position. And so, I don't, I mean, I don't have any qualms about any of the candidates serving as a chair or a vice chair, or being a member of P&amp;Z. There's a lot of experience, probably the most experienced, I haven't lived here that long, but it's, it's more experience than I can tell you that that other city I came from has on their P&amp;Z.
It's pretty impressive.
Lynn, did you have a comment? You said you wanted to do...
Well, I just, I mean, going through, I mean, we've, well, now, I guess, still have what Commissioners Sheridan and Commissioner Forrest, and then the four new ones, correct?
Commissioner Forrest, Commissioner Sheridan, and Commissioner Sadler.
Sadly, that's right, I missed one, I'm sorry. It was total seven. I was going through the minutes here, I didn't get a chance to attend the P&amp;Z meeting, I was out of town, so, was there any discussion at the P&amp;Z meeting as far as recommended chairs? I know that the council points, but in that, in that process, is, because you've got, I noticed that Commissioner Sheridan was acting as chair, and, I don't know, we've got a couple commissioners here, or did. Dennis, I mean, did y'all discuss that at all, or in that process?
No, we did not discuss that at all. It didn't come up in the conversation. It wasn't listed on the agenda either.
Smart.
Well, I was, I did attend the night of the presentations by each of the candidates, and all of them had exemplary experience, and so, Richard Suneli, I would recommend based on his presentation, his experience, his broad experience, both in development of communities, as well as just architecturally and all of that, and the opportunity that he's had to work with a number of different P&amp;Zs probably around the country. I would suggest that he, based on what I heard him say, that's all I can go on, is that he has the experience to chair this commission. And then the second person, Larry Vowell, has experienced of five years of, and again, I don't even, haven't read it, but as I remember, he had five years of experience on a P&amp;Z, as well as a number of administrative positions that he's held. Therefore, again, I think he would fulfill a vice chair's position.
How long do these positions hold, Phil?
You'll be reviewing all of this again in August, September time, right?
So, we're not reinventing the wheel, right? Well, let's call a vote.
Well, it's difficult picking a chair at this point, because we don't really know the people, but I, I mean, I've looked at the interviews, I've looked at their things, but, and the thing that I'm really looking for is someone who can manage the meeting well, you know, and that's really what's critical here, is managing the meeting and managing it according to the values that we portray, particularly here, and, you know, the values of, of how we treat people, how we deal with issues, and I don't, I, I, as I said, I'm, I'm not sure that I know these people.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Suneli is sitting in the back, if you'd like to have him approach the podium.
Okay.
I think what Bill was talking about was, could we go into executive session to do interviews, since we're not posted that way, can, I mean, can we talk to the candidates?
Well, we're voting on a chair and vice chair, can we talk to people?
Sure, you're posted on this.
We just can't go into executive session, but we can talk to them.
You just cannot go into executive session, we're not posted for that.
Okay, maybe we should give anyone here a chance to express, I think that would be appropriate, certainly. Please, come forward.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Any questions, I'd be happy to address them. I know that, I don't know all of you personally, I know one of you, because I know your wife.
Oh, no, do we have to?
Yes, please.
Did you...
Well, I guess I'll ask one, could you, even though it's kind of in your interview, can you kind of briefly summarize your, your interview with the P&amp;Z, and why you feel that you would be a good candidate for chair?
Let me try. We didn't address the question of chair or vice chair, but I made application because I'm in, I'm entering my 50th year of practice in architecture and planning, and I have owned my own firm in architecture and planning since 1982. I've worked for, you name it, big companies and small companies in the consulting practice, and I've worked for developers, and I've worked for municipalities. I was chief planner for the state of Hawaii for a massive redevelopment project that's currently underway. So, I've had a wide range of experience, and my experience has led me, architecture tends to be more of a physical discipline, but planning is not. Planning is social, economic, and physical, and a lot of people have emphasis in one of those areas, but don't see all of them together as equal. I tend to see them as equal, and I see our town progressing. We are not at the end of the trail, but we are far down the trail, and there are a number of things that I'm hearing from people and from you all, that we may want to get accomplished, but we don't have accomplished yet in the way of, call it, planning. Some of it has to do with, with, with the financial side of our town. There are some things that don't generate revenue, and there are some things that do. Yet, there are some things that we are doing now that have far-reaching effects, and I'll talk about parks for a moment, I think there's some incredible things that the town has accomplished in parks and recreation that stand for education and, and experience of our residents for years to come. It's going to benefit all of us and profit all of us in that way. So, the social, economic, and the physical, all important. As far as the chair is concerned, I think it's important, as I just heard, to have some management experience, to be able to manage people. That's really what management is, it's not management of things, it's people, and you all are good managers, I see that in all of you. I've had employees, and I've managed projects, and I've managed situations with public and citizen participation. In fact, I pretty much invented the citizen participation programs that are used throughout the state of Hawaii now in all their planning projects, because citizen participation is really where you get the ideas that you need in the first place. All of us have great ideas, but if it's not what our people want, then it's, it's just your idea or just mine. So, management means listening. I think the most important quality that a manager can have is to be a good listener. Now, sometimes management can seem like herding cats, we know what that's like, and that happens once in a while. Sometimes it has to happen, because issues that we deal with are contentious, or at least there are very different opinions among those who are involved. And so, we have to give people a chance to express their opinions, and have a chance to, to, to have an argument, if you will, in their, in their cause. So, that's all I have to say, I've got a ton of experience, and I'm interested in doing this because I'm a seven-year resident now of Trophy Club, I love the town, I love what we're doing, and I love the people here.
Anyone have any questions?
Would that pretty much answer? Me.
Thank you. I think that's good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And, but I do want to offer that opportunity to anyone else, anyone else on the P&amp;Z that would like to, P&amp;Z proposed or current that would like to speak to that?
I was there, obviously, listened to, and I'll just tell you this, I went home and...
I saw your...
I'm Garrett Reed. But I went home and I told my wife, I said, if there was just two of us interviewing for this job, I would have voted for him. He's very impressive, let me just say that.
Thank you. Okay, anybody? All right.
Motion made in executive.
Okay. And what...
I have the motion again.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
I could have it. Tell me what the motion is.
Motion is for Richard Suneli as chair and Larry Vowell as vice chair.
Yeah.
Okay, do we know anything about him?
Other than his application... Other than his application, uh, he did come by City Hall, I had a chance to visit with him, on a personal basis. Like Mr. Sinelli, he's, he's very involved in his community, and wants to, wants to be involved in his community, uh, and excited about the opportunity. And, and, uh, obviously, he's got five years of experience, I believe, in Woodway, which is a suburb of Waco on the P and Z there, uh, and, and knows the, knows the business.
Um, Patricia, you, have you looked at these applications?
I have read through them, yes ma'am.
Do you see, uh, on this one, a, a potential conflict of interest?
And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I read through them, but let me, let me find it.
Based on what, Mayor?
Based on his extreme, a lot of involvement with the Baptist Church. I think...
How would that be a conflict of interest?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Well, as with any other commissioner or, or council member, if an item came before him that presented the conflict, then he would have to recuse himself. I don't know how frequent that would be, I mean, if the Baptist Church comes up, as they're developing their property, those items come up, if he's, he would have to recuse himself if he has a conflict.
It's just a large part of our thing right now. Okay.
I mean, just, just for clarification, I mean, would he, how do you, since, since we're, uh, going to be in the process of expanding the church, and who knows, we may have another, um, but, uh, in that process, does that, just because he's part of the ministry, does that create a conflict?
It would depend on what his role is with the church, and I see, you know, I remembered he was something with education, and I'm, I'm looking now.
He, not with this specific one, though, I don't know about it.
It would depend on what he did and what the issue was, and as Councilmember Mayor made the decision earlier to avoid the appearance of anything that could look inappropriate, then that would be the decision that, that this commissioner would have to make as well as items came up. It's not just the letter of law, but the spirit of, you know, what looks inappropriate.
If the Methodist church comes up, then I have to...
No, but there's a lot more than, than, than that.
I mean, if, if that's a concern, can you be, are you concerned?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I just love it. Okay, any other comments? All right, I'm, I'm just uncomfortable not knowing this person at all.
We could delay the decision till another meeting.
We could do, can we do them separately? And delay the vice chair decision?
You can, you'll just have to bring back the resolution to take the action in a minute, it's not, not a major issue.
I don't see any reason to move this.
I don't either, I mean, I...
We need to move along, we have P and Z meetings and...
Yeah, all right, go for it.
Well, and...
Will you give madam?
I guess just for clarif- clarification purposes, if the, if, if, if the current motion passes, and two months down the road, P and Z comes forward and says, you know, we're, we're struggling here, we can do, we can always change, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I'll call vote. All those in favor of the motion? Post?
Yes.
That was a yes or a no?
That was, that was a yes for a no.
Okay.
A, a post.
All right. Okay. Okay. Moving on to item number nine. Considered to take appropriate action regarding the expenditure of remaining 2008 park bond funds towards the installation of 23 trees to be located within Independence East in an amount not to exceed $4,167.83. Oh, there is someone here, I'm like, how come there not be anybody here? Okay.
She's on the corner, she's not getting it into her ears.
I just made this fast. These trees are going to dunk it into a diamond.
You gotta do it when you can, huh? Um, Jean Buck, 2401 Lilly Fields, representing myself and my husband, Michael Buck. I think we've presented in front of you several times, so thank you again for the opportunity. And thank you for the consideration of the trees, I think they will provide an acoustic and a visual barrier between the parks and our homes. Our only, um, my husband and I, our only thoughts about this are, why not extend the trees further down towards the Indy West side of things? Um, we do represent that side of the neighborhood. From the map and what I could tell, everything looks to be behind the homes of a couple of, uh, folks who are more affected, I would say, than most of my neighbors, but the west side is certainly affected. So I was also curious as to the cost of the trees. I know what I paid for 19 trees in my backyard, and exceeds, uh, what you're budgeting for. Uh, if you got a great deal and you want to pass that on to 2401 Lilly Field, you would be more than happy to install some on our side of the fence as well. But I just, that, those were our two thoughts. One, can we consider putting some more trees? I, I realize that because we are only, you know, about 50 feet away from those ball fields and the tennis court lights, visually, it will take years before we have any real buffer between us and those ball fields. But acoustically, I do think it will go a long way. And I also think we just shouldn't forget about the neighbors on that side of, of the, the neighborhood we pay taxes to. So that was really all I had to say, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to actually refer to you, be honest.
Mrs. Buck is correct, most of the trees allocated on this plan were designed for Independence East, as far as the plan goes. Allocation is, the, the amount is for 20, 23 trees, with the association later on giving us 1,500 to add some additional trees. The, well, let me just go through it real quick. The, the tree installation, the reason those are approximate, obviously, is the trail isn't in yet. Until that trail goes in, I can't, I can't say exactly where they're going to go. We're going to work with the community and, and, and look for the optimum locations. To address Mrs. Buck's, um, request, we could come back and put some trees. I'm not sure where we would put them, though, because the wall, the wall, like we said, we had a utility easement running down the wall, but I believe that was closer to, um, Ms. Folly's house, the utility easement. I'm not sure where we could get them to get the lights they're looking for, as long as there's room at the end of the park, like I said, I mean, we didn't, we didn't look at the end of the park up near Parkview, because that's where you're talking, right? We didn't, this wasn't about that section up near Parkview. I do know there's a very narrow section between the sidewalk and the wall facing Parkview. And then the other, the other issue would be, um, the space immediately adjacent to her house is the, you've got the pool entrance, and you've got, um, that open piece of land right there with a marquee on it. So I'm not sure if we're talking about that area. Uh, it would change the look of the park a little bit if you put trees all the way to the road right there. I'm not sure that would work real well when we do our events as, as well, right in that spot. And as she was stating, the, the field number, um, field number one on the other side, I can't say right off the top of my head if that would work or not, I can't remember the distance. Forty-three feet, yeah. Yeah, we might be able to get some trees in there, um, a, a couple trees in between that field. It's on the other side of Parkview.
Yeah.
Not on her side of Parkview. So, I mean, that would be a, that would be a possibility. I mean, you see the, uh, uh, the quote in front of you, so it's a, you could break it down to a per item. You know, I can't imagine getting more than, more than three over there, just from a space, a space restriction, I don't think we'd get more than three.
We'll take it.
So, I mean, I, I would be willing to make the attempt if it was, um, feasible.
I think we can look at it.
Mm-hmm.
So you, you're talking about you would need to put it on the other side of the street?
Yeah.
But that's what would gain the same...
Yes, ma'am.
Be a little noise.
If you come up here.
It is a narrow strip, the easement, I know where you're talking about. I think it, um, there's about, I think it's 100 feet, my property line runs from, um, um, I'm sorry, I'm blanking out the pool, the entryway to the pool, all the way to my neighbor's yard, the fence line. It's probably close to 80 to 100 feet, it's quite long. And I think on the opposite side of my stone wall fence, or the Highlands fence, there's one tree. So I don't know if they were staggered, if the developer had to place them a certain, certain point down the line, all the way down Parkview. But there is room in the easement for more trees on that side of Parkview. And then on the, the side that faces the community pool, if there's a way to stagger some cypress, we've got Arizona cypress in our backyard, they're supposed to grow to be 15 feet wide, and, you know, 40 feet tall, and seven short years. Um, I can tell you mine aren't anywhere near that. Had some incredible heat over the last two summers. But essentially, if we could see something that would stagger that, um, and if it is even a possibility to do it on the other side where the ball field is, and I realize, again, this is not for visual appeal, this is for acoustic down-the-line barrier. And, and I neglected to say, when I was up here before, the association has done a tremendous job in getting those lights off, so I just wanted to, you know, seldom do we come up here and say, something went well, this went well. You guys have been extremely responsive and on top of things, and we just wanted to say thank you. But we'd like to see what was talked about here a month ago fulfilled. And this would be one more step towards that process.
So you'll take a look at it?
Mm-hmm. We have that latitude, I mean, the, 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 the plan that you have in front of you i- is notional, because we, we've got to do that connector anyway.
Right.
So we've got a little bit of flexibility there.
Adam, help me out here. Cause I'm directionally challenged a little bit.
Okay.
I know, just on a personal note, the, the Folly's house, where, where does it fall i- in this diagram, or does it fall in the diagram?
It doesn't, it is not, sir. It goes, her house would actually be all the way into the pool parking lot.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's, it's not in, it's out, it's outside the park, it would be in the, the last section of the pool parking lot.
Okay.
What the, is this, is the, is this supposed to be trees?
Yeah, those are, those are trees, yeah.
Yeah, there, there will be some trees planted along the, uh, obviously, we hold events here, so I mean, when we lay stuff out, it has to make sure that it's still doable. When these trees mature, that it doesn't wipe out the whole ability to do anything. I, I have spoken with her, I mean, there is the ability, uh, and it's not just her, but the, the house is there. We talked about planting some trees adjacent between the pool parking lot and the multi-use field, the small multi-use field. So I'm going to stagger probably three trees in there as well.
Okay.
We have to maintain visibility in all this stuff, too, that's really, and the space to do, have our events.
Yeah, I still think the space is probably the biggest issue, okay.
The, uh, junipers are headed for behind the Fitzgerald's house, correct?
There will be some, yes.
Thanks.
Can I guess what, well, I have you, I mean, it, it looks like the quote is for the trees only, so staff's going to plant the trees, is that correct?
Yes. Staff's going to plant the trees.
Don't you know, I, I paid well more, well over $5,000 for my tree, but I mean...
We, we...
You know people.
We've actually gotten better, the, the longer we've, we've expanded as a town with irrigation and stuff, we've gotten better and better deals, every year, actually.
We'll talk later.
The, can we make this motion? It doesn't, I guess we can make the motion with some flexibilities as far as the budget, is that correct? So he wouldn't have to come back in flexibility, and, uh, he's got a 15% contingency on there to get to the 4,100. But if we, at, at the current price quote, at the 189, and, I mean, 152 and the 159, is that, if we had it, you know, made it to cap it at $5,000, that would give you the flexibility, if you needed to buy additional trees and felt the need for them, you could. But in, in other words, set a cap at it to 4,100, and we say not to exceed 5,000, then, then you've got the flexibility to work with, and...
And there's money left over in that 2008 bond, that we could go to 5,000, I mean, you know, we're...
Yeah, there's...
$100, but still...
Can we do that without P and Z?
And we have come under budget, by the way, we have come under budget, like the lights, the contingency on the lights, if you go back and look at that, we didn't use the contingency. So once again, if you do go, I believe if you went up, and we didn't need those funds, we just would not spend them.
Right, right.
Um, but right now, the, the motion says to be located within Independence East.
You would have to...
We need to...
Make an amendment and say in P and Z and West? Okay.
Is that the way we want to put it?
That'd be fine. Remember, we also have another $1,500 coming from the association, and it's not included in there.
True.
When are you supposed to get the motion, the money from the association? In time to buy the sheets, or can you just...
I've already talked with finance, so we'll move forward, all the associations have committed, we'll move forward on the trees, and we'll bring it in as a, for, a revenue, um, from the associations. So we'll, we'll basically act on this within the next two days.
Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion, um, to potentially expanding it to 5,000 and, and/or, um, E- Independence East and parts of Independence West, right? What we want?
I'll do it.
I'm getting a look, is that okay?
West wasn't on the agenda, right?
No, no, it wasn't, that's the only thing I'm looking at, is that, um, you're, you're going up in cost and you're changing it to a different park, so I don't think anybody would have any objection to that, but I don't know that we've met our requirements to notify the public that that's what y'all would be doing.
Or if we don't raise the amount, but just say within parks inside the town limits?
That would be fine.
Or just Independence Parks.
I was about to say, we, we title it Independence Park, budgetary-wise.
All right, so let me do that.
That's right.
Good idea.
So I'll make a motion, um, to approve the expenditure of remaining 2,008 park bond funds towards the installation of 23 trees. No, I can't say 23 trees, because it might be more, right?
Minimum 23 trees.
Minimum of 23 trees, to be located within the Independence Parks, in an amount not to exceed $4,167.83.
No, you cannot, we, we got it posted very specifically, so let's just stick with it on this one.
Right.
All right, so I think with the motion, I guess, oh, I'll, I'll second the motion, so we can go to discussion. So I think there's enough direction to staff to say, let's look at the other areas, and if we can, and, and if the, you've got 4,100 here, plus another 1,500, that should maybe buy it, buy you enough trees.
There's some...
If it be needed, I mean, if, if we can get them planted and get them, get them growing and stuff like that, then, uh, cause, uh...
We'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Okay. Wait a minute, so how much more season is there for pla- tree planting? Because there is a very specific time of the year to plant trees and get them grounded well.
I, I agree, summer is not optimal tree planting by any means. I mean, all of our trees, the, the reason the contingency in there primarily was for irrigation parks, it's irrigation, that's the contingency. Um, I mean, all the trees are dripped, uh, with dual drippers on each tree, so, I mean, um, we're, we're trying to still meet with the, um, the LDS church, this has been sort of an ongoing process as far as getting it set up. We're going to try to move on getting the trails started from our side first, because they won't be ready to do their side. Um, and you, and we've yet to even have some conversations about some of their landscaping. So, um, you know, we will, we will move on this as quick as we can. But we do plant seeds, trees, just like if you're doing homes during the summer, we, we do plant during the summer, it's just not optimal, you have to watch them a little more frequently.
Well, considering the water constraints coming up, and so forth and so on, I would just urge you to plant them when they get their best setting and their greatest potential for success. And that's October, November, right, for planting trees? I, I, I agree that it's best to do that, in this case, I think that it's early enough in the season, and I don't think we should, I don't think it would be consistent with our, um...
He's going to get busy tomorrow.
Okay.
Start digging those holes.
Yep, you don't know about the trails and all that, understand?
Start digging the holes, someone can go in.
I, I just need them to actually stake the trail. If they'll stake it, I don't need them to actually build the entire thing.
All right.
I mean, we'll do all possible to make it safe. I mean, if, if it goes on too long, we have to hold up. I mean, if, if it goes on too long, we have to hold up. Okay.
Good idea. All those in, is there any other discussion?
I think we kind of beat it to death.
All those in favor? Okay, we're good.
It's a bit of change in the camp, so, move on.
Okay, item number eleven. Consider and take appropriate action regarding adoption of the Vision Two Thirty Plan.
Steven?
Twenty Thirty.
It's only nine o'clock.
You wanna handle it?
Steven?
Okay, I'll take it, I'll take it, Mayor. As, as the council is well aware, we've been working with the Vision Twenty Thirty Committee for the better part of a year. Uh, at their last meeting, they voted to adopt and recommend that plan to the council. Uh, most of the council was there, um, w- with the adoption, with the council's adoption of the Twenty Thirty Vision Plan, uh, which is the long-range vision that was prepared for by the stakeholders of our community. Uh, we'll post it to the website and start doing some education about what that is and, and what it means to our community. Uh, and as we all know, that, that plan dovetails with your strategy map and your goals and objectives. Um, and it will drive what we do in terms of recommending future budget considerations for the council's consideration to make that a reality. Uh, you know, we can plan until the, the cows come home, but if we don't put resources against those types of issues that make sense and, and build that vision, uh, you're gonna have a great plan. You're not gonna have the reality, and that's, that's what's driving all of our decisions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we adopt the Vision Two, Twenty Thirty Plan that was submitted by the Vision Committee.
And I second.
Okay, um, I'd just like to mention that I sincerely appreciate all of the people that spent a significant amount of time working on it. I appreciate, uh, you guys, uh, Steven and Mike, with your preparation, um, and assistance in the meetings. I, I think that we had a, a really good representation of citizens, and I'm really excited about this. And I appreciate that, taking that and linking it with our strategy, but even more importantly, our hits and misses and our, our specific goals. That's what really makes this mean something, which is, is for me, very exciting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I can, I just want to, um, along with the Vision Committee, we'll have one more meeting with those folks, uh, and invite all of your appointed boards and commissions on the eighteenth of April to review the, the provisions of this Vision Twenty Thirty Plan, and, and what we're referring to this as, as, is an alignment meeting, so that 4B and P and Z and, you know, all your other boards and commissions that you have out there understand what it is we're all driving toward, and have a commonality about what we're trying to do within their own particular piece of the, of the world. So I'm excited about having that meeting, and that's scheduled for the eighteenth of April.
Excellent, I think that's, that's really, um, the thing that will also make this all work. Okay, is there any other discussion?
I was...
What?
Your honor, Ralph, go ahead.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. And thank you, all of you, as well.
She said what I was gonna say, so you covered it well.
Um, okay, item number twelve, Town Manager's Update regarding, um, well, Town Manager's Update regarding all those things listed.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, council, council, um, I've got several things I want to visit with you about, and I've just gotta get my notes in order here. A police department facility, uh, we continue to look at every option available to us, not the least of which is repairing, I know you've given me some direction, you've given, given the staff some direction to, uh, not put good money after bad if we know that we're gonna take that building down eventually. But that may be an option for us, uh, you know, moving forward. Uh, we're looking at the possibility of a modular facility, uh, in addition to the building that's there. We're, you know, it's still, we can still use that facility for animal control purposes, as an example. Uh, or the evidence room, if they've got to get into it periodically, they can get in and out and, and then go do their work. Um, we're looking at other options, administrative offices in town, uh, near town. We're looking at every conceivable option, and, uh, we're not prepared yet to bring, to use specific numbers, but we're getting close to that. Uh, and, and looking for some direction from the council when that all occurs. Um, in the meantime, we're continuing to work, you know, hand in glove, literally, with the, with the fire department, and we certainly appreciate those guys. Uh, and we'll continue to make this a priority. Uh, but we certainly don't want to just make bad decisions because in haste. I can tell you that the insurance claim has been paid. Uh, we received fifty-two thousand dollars in insurance claims, uh, with an additional twenty-five thousand set aside, uh, if and when we do take that building down. There's, there's gonna be an, an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and there's also a rental provision. If, if in fact, the decision at some point is to rent facilities, whether it's office facilities currently in the town, or a modular facility, there's an, there's a small old twenty-five thousand dollar stipend, uh, that would carry us forward with that as well. So, uh, we're gonna lay all of that out from a financial perspective and, and give you, uh, every option that we can come up with. And we're getting real close. We, we toured a facility this morning, um, we toured other facilities. We got the costs almost narrowed down to the point where I can share those with you. Um, and I would anticipate that happening in, by the twenty-second of April. From a time perspective, I would hope that we'll be out of the fire department, um, by mid-May, or at least some of them potentially out, and some of the PD, some portions of, of the PD out by mid-May.
Okay. Like, I realize y'all have been very diligent in this, but it seems like it's, it's taken forever to get to this point.
Well, our, our procurement policies dictate that we've got to have three bids for everything that we want to do.
I got you, so...
And it's, it's very frustrating.
Are we, uh, can we be assured you'll have it on that date?
We're... I'll be one unhappy camper if, if I'm not available to answer all your questions and get a decision from the council by the twenty-second.
Okay.
Early voting, uh, as you know, we're in the, uh, voting season. Early voting starts the twenty-ninth of this month and continues through, and I've lost my paper. Amy, is it May seventh, I think, is the last day of early voting. We've got all of those schedules posted on the website, uh, and, you know, we've got several issues on the ballot, so, you know, we'll be encouraging people to take advantage of, of their early voting opportunities.
Are we doing any publication on issues, you know?
There is a publication out there on the charter, charter amendments on the website.
But are we sending it to people? I mean, a lot more people vote than are on the website.
Well, uh, we've, we've given them notification on e-blast, and I don't know, did you put it on Facebook as well?
Paper, are we doing it in, like, in a mud bill, or, I mean, I, I keep stressing this, and everybody keeps ignoring me, but there are a lot of people that don't go online.
I get that, but what, especially on the charter amendments, uh, you know, you're talking about volumes of information. I can give them a paper that shows what the amendments are, the proposed propositions, but they don't mean anything unless you delve into the, into the document and start reading about what, what that means. And what we've got on the internet is linked to all of that information. So if you want to talk about...
Well, then perhaps even sending something out, pointing them to that.
Okay, we can do that.
People don't sit around necessarily looking at the stuff.
The, the notice will be published in the newspaper, and it will have the proposition and the amended language. It will have in the newspaper, it will all be posted in there, Mayor.
One time.
And are we doing any FAQs or anything like that?
That's what this basically is. We, we've got to be very careful about how we present information. We're not advocating for one way or the other, all we're presenting are effectively FAQs.
Okay.
I bet you'll be coming out in the paper, what, next?
April tenth and seventeenth will be the two publications.
Community Garage Sale is, uh, the twenty-first...
Twentieth.
Twentieth, I'm sorry. Uh, moving forward, we've got the Medal of Honor, uh, procession coming through...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. We anticipate those guys to come through sometime between four and four-thirty. This is an annual event that happens where, uh, Medal of Honor winners are picked up at DFW and transported by procession. I think last year, there was upwards of three hundred and fifty motorcycles and several agencies in the procession. And we gather up on the Trophy Club Drive Bridge with, with, uh...
Flag up? Do the flag, uh, roll it up in, in our truck, display up, a huge flag.
Yeah, over the bridge, and we would encourage all of you to come out on the tenth, uh, between four and four-thirty. That's as close as we can get to narrowing that down.
Just for clarification, it is four to four-thirty?
That's when we anticipate them coming through.
On Facebook, it said three-thirty to four, so I just wanted to...
They are scheduled to leave the, uh, airport at three-thirty. Uh, they have never been on time, they've always, uh, had flight issues and stuff like that, so we built a window of three-thirty to four-thirty as far as their departure, and then they travel through the construction area like that, so...
I would also, oh, I'm sorry. I would also mention that, um, we do the stuff on the bridge, but the, uh, one year I've been on the bridge, and the other year I was down at, uh, by Tom Thumb. And a, a lot of people are along there, and, and that's actually kind of neat, because you, you know, from the bridge, you can see the whole thing coming, but down there, you're kind of like on a level with the rest of, with people. So both places, and we have enough citizens.
It's always a, uh, it's, it's a meaningful event every year. And, and the fire department does a great job getting out there and, and showing our colors.
But where are they going? Where's their destination?
They go to Gainesville for the meeting.
Their destination is Gainesville, yeah.
Let me speak, uh...
I was gonna say, if they have, you know, three hundred and fifty bikes, and even if they're on time to get started at three-fifty...
Yeah.
Or three-thirty, it'll ta- it'll take them thirty minutes just to get out of the airport.
Well, they, they, uh, well, they have got this down to science, they've been doing it since two thousand and two. Um, they've got it where they meet off property over by the Marriott, and they start the procession. They have escorts way ahead of the, the motorcycles and stuff, blocking traffic, shutting lanes, and the whole nine yards. So they've got it down to a, a science is when they get moving. But like you said, when they start moving, it takes them about thirty minutes to get, you know, to us, per se, so...
They have to get those helicopters warmed up first.
Yeah.
Be a neat deal. And the date on that again?
Uh, the tenth, which is Wednesday.
Yeah.
And every bridge between DFW Airport and Gainesville will be lined with some type of representation of, of support, yes. This is definitely a flag-waving event.
Cool.
Okay.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's all right, let's talk about Indian Creek Road Improvements. That's a project that, uh, has, is nearing completion in design. Uh, we're working with the Mud. Uh, the engineer that is designing the road improvements are, is also the engineer that has been, uh, hired by the Mud to, to work the utility angle. Um, we are anticipating the developer to be complete with Canterbury Hills Development, substantially complete in approximately eight weeks. We will not start that project before then. Uh, you know, even though that there'll still be construction trucks coming through with, you know, housing supplies and that kind of thing, all the big equipment will be out of that area. The last thing we want to do is, you know, start a project, have it under construction, and then all the, the heavy earth-moving equipment go back and forth trying to get that neighborhood done. So, uh, we're gonna delay that, the actual, I'm sorry?
Bid process.
Yeah, we'll, we'll still work on it. We anticipate the, uh, the, being substantially complete in Canterbury Hills in eight weeks. We were in, we were initially going to try to get this thing pushed up to a, a May let date. And all we're gonna do is drag our heels a little bit on the, on the let date, so that when, by the time we let it, get the contract signed, pre-cons, and the whole bit, they're ready to, uh, turn dirt as soon as we can get that heavy equipment out of Canterbury Hills.
Yeah.
Okay? Uh, and finally, West Nile, it's, it's nearing that time of the year. Benton County, you may have already seen on the news with, uh, with preparation. Uh, I sent an email to all of you letting you know that we are engaged in that process, and starting April fifteenth, we'll start issuing two briquettes, uh, per household, uh, at, at our permitting desk, just like we did last year. Uh, and we'll stay tuned and, and be, uh, acclimated to what is, effectively came up and, and caught everybody in the Metroplex by surprise last year. I think we're, we're all out in front of it. It doesn't mean that we won't have it. Uh, you know, we can't, we can't do anything about what Mother Nature does to us in terms of, during the winters and having enough freezes, but we do think that there were certainly more freezes this year, and if we won't have that much, we're anticipating. But that being said, we're gonna still be prepared, so, education, education, education.
Do we have any means for people who work to pick up briquettes?
We'll do, just like we did last year, and put some down at the fire department.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
What about the Lions?
Lions Development.
Oh, ADF, I'm sorry. Uh, last Friday, uh, very successful event, um, despite some shortcomings, it was a very successful event. Uh, our booth was, uh, I won't say we were overrun, but we were very busy, entertaining developers, uh, business makers...
Yep.
And lots of interest, uh, about Trophy Club. And, you know, our message is getting out. They were coming to us with the idea that we have this huge trade area, and that's one of, one of the things that Steven has done a fantastic job of doing, is getting our, beating that drum about Trophy Club and its commercial opportunities. And as a result, we got quite a bit of activity. Uh, and like I said, we're going to executive session to, to talk about some of that activity tonight that, uh, that the law allows us to go in executive session for, uh, to protect the names of the innocent. And we'll, we'll, I'll have, I'll have a little bit more to share during executive session.
Okay. Um, all right, item number thirteen, uh, Mayor and Council Updates Regarding Training, Education, Et Cetera. Um, had emergency management, um, that was a training session, I think, that, uh, was leadership and emergency management. Uh, it was a very good session that was put on by FEMA down at, uh, COG. I think it was, it was part of FEMA. But, uh, one of the things that, that made me think, though, because I've been to a number of different emergency management things, and I've done a lot of the, most of the training that's offered. But at this point, I'm the only person that has, and in an emergency, the mayor is responsible. If I'm not here, there's no one else on this council right now that's trained. And, um, Bill, you did some training, um, back a couple of years ago, but I think it's really important that, um, we look into that.
Clay, you'd be the...
Get some training, uh, some additional training, I don't think it's good just for one person.
I'll be interested, I'll see.
Yeah. Okay, well...
Permanently.
Hope we don't have any issues in the next few weeks. Um, a metroport partnership, uh, was here at Trophy Club. Uh, Stephen did an excellent presentation, um, representing Trophy Club and the things that we, and the economy as well. Um, I appreciate it, I think it was, we were very well represented there.
And, and just one comment, my understanding is he, that, um, presentation is now on the website, is that correct, April? Not yet, no. Oh. Everybody look at it, it's correct.
Uh, the Mayor's Roundtable, um, that's all the, the mayors in the northeast area, um, which it was an excellent ev- event. I thought I talked about that one before, I'm not sure, I'm losing track of time. Uh, manu- GE Manufacturing Solutions, uh, we had... GE Manufacturing Solutions, we had the, it was the grand opening of the locomotive plant. And it was phenomenal. We had a tour of both the locomotive plant and the mining equipment plant, which they make just the wheel bearing or the axle thing for these mining, these huge mining trucks. But just seeing that event and seeing what they've done, and they have, they interviewed something like twelve thousand people to hire three hundred. And they put them through, they had special classes set up by North Central Texas College and Tarrant County College, put them through four weeks of these classes. I think it's just an incredible example of what can be done, of what people, what a business can do in how they manage their people, as well as some of the really creative things they did in the assembly. If you get a chance to tour that facility, it's pretty fascinating. So they are producing, I think, it's a one-point-three-million-square-feet, and they are producing two locomotives a week. It takes sixty days. That was just one of the things. They primed it. They brought in things that were, through this whole assembly line, they brought in things that were at different stages so that when they started, all their people would have something to do. I thought that was pretty fascinating. Right now, BNSF is their primary person.
It's one of the reasons that they're located here.
That's right. You're right. That is one of the large reasons. But it was, the other thing that was interesting is that as we walked around, they had different employees talking. And, I mean, it's a very strong, strong attitude and work ethic. It was pretty amazing, which some of you may have heard at the chamber luncheon, some parts of it, because the general manager at that plant, he lives here, Walter, and he did a presentation at the chamber luncheon this week. So that's what that was. Anybody have anything to add? We didn't have any liaison things on this meet, did we not?
Well, the park board stuff is basically what we voted on tonight, so...
Okay. All right, Amy, would you check that on the agenda? We should have an item for the Warden Commission Liaisons. Okay. And then the future agenda items.
I've got one I want to add.
Okay.
I'd like to see us investigate a residential renewal program in Trophy Club for the older homes, either through tax abatements or grants or whatever, but I think maybe if we could go through CFAB or as I've been involved in the last two or three weeks, helping my wife in real estate and showing a lot of homes in Trophy Club. And as you drive around parts of the neighborhood, there are some areas that need some assistance. And I think we, I think we need to stay ahead of the curve, and we need to look at some ways to assist. Many of these are from retirees, so assist them either through tax abatements or some grants or something to fix up, set some criteria, age of home, amount of money, but I would like to see us look at that.
Okay, yeah, I think that's good.
That may be a thing for the 4B Board to consider as well.
It's something we've discussed.
Yeah.
We've talked about that, and we haven't ever brought forward a formal program, but it's something that we've kicked around from time to time, saying, what do we do? And, you know, as we start using the Vision Plan to be one of our pillars, is to be a premier residential destination. One of those things is upkeeping properties
Yep.
and reinvesting in those properties, and some people have the ability to do it, and some people, it's a little bit tougher. And so what are those programs that we can do to assist those? And, you know, I don't know if it's a, is it a freeze, is it an abatement, is a matching program or something?
That's what we need to decide. That's what we need to look at.
And are there areas in town that you want to preserve some of the original ranch-style homes that were built here versus other parts of town? I think that's all a really good discussion to have.
Okay. Anybody else?
Something that's on the list right now, but I just want to make sure we get eyes on it, is we talked about making June a Speed Awareness Month. And so, I mean, we have three meetings till June.
Got it.
Okay, if you have.
Along those same lines, I'm pulling together an HOA, presidents of the various HOAs, I think there's nine or ten of them now in town. And we'll meet, I think, later in May to talk about speeds in the neighborhood and what they can as HOAs particularly help participate in and that kind of thing, among some other issues that I think are just opening those lines of communication with HOAs.
Very cool.
Okay. Do I have to read this whole page?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, you can delegate.
That's a different thing.
And he was late.
So he didn't have to read the proclamation.
That's right, you missed the proclamation today.
Okay, I got it.
Mayor, I would be honored to read this if I can so do it.
I don't know, it doesn't matter.
If you want, if you'd like me to.
He's the vice chair, he can read it.
Go ahead, if you would like to.
Okay, "In behalf of a mayor, pursuant to Texas Government Code indicated Subchapter 551, council will convene into a closed executive session as authorized by Section 551.071. Prentices two, consultation with the attorney for consultation with its attorney on a matter that's with the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act." Number one, Water and Wastewater Services Terms of Interlocal Agreement Regarding Lease and Conveyance of the Utility System Assets and Provisions of Retail Water and Wastewater Services Approval and Parameters of Representation and Related Matters. B, Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations to discuss or deliberate the offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect to the town seeks to have locate within the territory of the town and Section 551.071. Two, consultation with attorney for consultation for its attorney on the matter on which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflict with the Open Meetings Act. Number one, development of incentives for prospects and development of legal advice regarding potential development, potential incentives, and contractual agreements and related matters. C, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation is in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in its negotiations with a third person. Item one, Police Department Relocation and Municipal Services Facilities. Item D, Section 551.074, to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Annual Evaluation of Town Attorney, Patricia Adams.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we will pursue into all of those. It goes into executive session at nine-twenty.
Take a short break?
Yeah.
Is he, is he?
Ready in the back?
Ready.
Yeah, thank you. We'll call the meeting back into regular session at twelve-fifty-two. And take any action necessary as a result.
Madam Mayor, I move to direct the town attorney to work with outside special district legal counsel to continue reviewing the proposed contract for water and wastewater services with the Mud and provide input and advice.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I have a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I make a motion that the council will direct the mayor to negotiate with the town attorney, come up with an employment agreement under the terms discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay. Messages we made and seconded, all those in favor?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at twelve...
I'm in favor of that, too.